We will now begin the City of Boynton Beach City Commissioners Meeting today, Tuesday, October 2nd, 2018 at 6:30 PM. Would everyone please rise for invocation by Vice Mayor Romulus, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Dear Lord, we thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen Grant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Christina Romulus.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Mac McCray.
Here.
Commissioner Joe Casello. All present, Mayor.
Thank you. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Yes, Commissioner Katz?
Can I add to future, or not future, agenda items, but with the will of the Board, to announcements next meeting on the school referendum that's on the November ballot?
Okay. Is there, you said that was the, is there two or just one?
Just one presentation.
Okay. And we'll put that under announcement for next meeting?
Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor, I'd like to add for next meeting, if we possibly could, with the Board's approval, that we put on the discussion about the tennis club maintenance and membership cost.
And I'd like to switch around items 3D to go in front of 3C. May I have the agenda approved as amended?
A move.
All those in favor states so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Agenda is approved unanimously. Moving on to informational items by members of the City Commission. Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
Yeah, I met with Bradley Miller from Miller Land Planning, and that's it.
All right. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. I met with Bradley Miller about 12:30 today as well. I'd like to make one announcement since we're talking about voting, and it says, "Your voice, your vote." October the 4th, 6:00 to 7:30 PM. As we prepare for the general election on November the 6th, 2018, come and receive the knowledge. The forum will be presented in English as well as Creole. Voter's registration, education, tools and sample ballots, and much more. Attendances will be the Samuel Pierre, President of the Palm Beach Haitian Heroes in Corporation. This will take place at the St. John's Missionary Baptist Church RMD Complex, 900 North Sequest Boulevard. Come out and get registered. Your vote counts. Additional information, you may contact Bridges at (561) 369-2323, or you may contact Commissioner McCray personally. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
On the same vein, I'd like to reiterate that the last date of registered vote is October 9th, so if you're not a registered voter, please get out there and register to vote. We have some opportunities to really create history here in 2018, so I look forward to everybody getting out there and having their voices heard. In addition, our 2018 midterm election is November 6th, 2018. Thank you.
Commissioner Casello?
I had a meeting with Bradley Miller with Miller Land Planning this week.
September 21st, I attended a meeting with Palm Beach County Action Alliance for Mental Health. It was good to see our Boynton Beach Mental Health Committee there and being a proactive force for the Action Alliance. On the 22nd, I attended National POW MIA Day where our local Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts stood vigil over the Veterans Park all night. Then I attended Orange Theory later that day for the hero challenge of the Fire Department versus the Police Department. The final calorie count was 12,000 calories to 11,000 calories for the Fire Department to win the challenge. And then it is start of our Boynton Beach Art District, so I attended that art walk. On the 25th, I met with Debbie Majors and Wally Majors and Stephanie for the Palm Beach Habilitation Center that provides special needs, place for special needs individuals and adults. It was very informative to learn about all the things that go on there, and if anybody needs more information, please contact Debbie Majors, our ADA Coordinator. On the 26th, I met with Bradley Miller and was at Lake Worth for the League of Cities. I also spoke with the Women's Circle. The 27th was 211 Legislative Day. For all those who don't know about 211, you can always just call 211 to find out information about them. They provide suicide assistance, they provide a Sunshine Call. If you're worried that one of your family members does not receive, or you don't receive a phone call a day, they will make sure that you are doing okay every day. And then I went to the Palm Tran Service Board to where we were able to learn more about the Route Performance Maximization, or RPM. On the 28th, I attended federal court for the TD Square Program where local middle schoolers were able to learn about civil discourse and what it means to really post a threat on Facebook or social media. I met with Senator Berman and attended the firefighter's spaghetti dinner. On the 29th, I went to see the last day for Future Six that was teaching, learning how to surf for special needs children, and I attended the Palm Tran opening. So from the 30th to tomorrow, you can get free rides on Palm Tran. I grabbed a stack of their booklets that are at the door. Today, I met with the Boynton Beach Garden Club, who is planning to have a plant sharing in November. I met with My Brother's Keeper for the Race to Equity Summit, and met with Mike DeBose. One of the other things that I wanted to talk about with the Commission was when we approved for the 3% for the general employees. I know normally we were able to have a discussion about that for collective bargaining, and I wanted to know if we could plan a collective bargaining for the things, for the upcoming agreements that we have. I know that we're each meeting with the City Manager on Monday, and so I'd like to get Commissioner Casello's input before he goes away. And so I'm asking the Commission, would you be able to meet 30 minutes before next meeting to talk about the upcoming agreements?
I have no problem with that, Mayor.
Vice Mayor or Commissioner McCray?
I want to make sure that, you know, we gonna be in line. I'm just saying with bargaining, I'm just saying I don't want to do anything that might be wrong or right. Jim, will we be okay?
You're fine to do that. For collective bargaining, the Commission can meet anytime it likes without notice to the public, and those meetings are closed to the public.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Commissioner Casello, are you gonna take a 30 minutes, because I can give you 15?
That's all I probably need. All right.
30 minutes is enough? You want to do an hour?
Well...
We might as well say it with a bang. I can do an hour, just, that's what everybody agrees to.
We'll go, start at 5:30? And how about this?
Then you might eat a sandwich.
And I'll get dinner. How about that?
Mayor, you know, have you finished?
Yep.
I'd just like to say, you know, to staff and also to this Commission, we have just completed another fiscal year. We are embarking out on a new fiscal year, and Lori, I always like to know how much money did we save, you know, from one fiscal year to the next? And I want to say to staff, you know, thank you for tightening the reins. They're even tighter this year, you know, and also to the Commission, I'm just saying, let's watch every penny that we spend, for we are still due diligence of the stewardship of the funds for the citizens here in the City of Boynton. Thank you.
And the last thing is that I forgot about an announcement. On October 25th, the Criminal Justice Commission is coming to the Carolyn Simms Center from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. That is where you get to meet all the experts from around the county that are keeping us safe. Is there any more informational items from the Board? Seeing none, moving on to announcements. The first is the Palm Beach County Property Appraisers Office will be manning a table at the Senior Center to provide Boynton Beach residents with information on how to file for a home sit exemption from 1:30 to 2:30 PM on the following dates. Tuesday, October 9th, 2018, Tuesday, November 13th, and Tuesday, December 11th. Announce the change in the date for the regularly scheduled November 6th Commission meeting to Wednesday, November 7th. And moving on to the Proclamations of October 5th, 2018, as Energy Efficient Day in the City of Boynton Beach. Rebecca Harvey, Sustainability Coordinator, will accept the proclamation. Proclamation. Whereas energy efficiency is the art of getting the same or better performance using less energy, all while cutting utility bills for residential, business, and industrial customers. And whereas reliable, affordable energy is vital to our economic prosperity, and energy efficiency is the most productive and cost-effective way to meet our energy needs. And whereas implementing clean energy policies and programs helps boost economic opportunities and job creation while continuing to move toward a sustainable future. And whereas cutting energy waste saves U.S. consumers billions of dollars on their utility bills annually, up to $500 per household from appliance efficiency standards alone. And whereas more than 2.2 million Americans work in the energy efficiency sector in local good-paying, clean energy jobs that can't be outsourced, and increasing efficiency will create more of them. And whereas residents and businesses of Boynton Beach can continue to contribute to our energy efficiencies efforts by learning about participating in our Energy Edge rebate and property-assessed clean energy financing programs. Whereas together, the residents of Boynton Beach can continue to contribute to our sustainability efforts by learning more about energy efficiency and practicing smarter energy use in their daily lives. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the 5th of October, 2018, as Energy Efficient Day.
No clapping?
All right.
There's applause.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commission. My name's Rebecca Harvey, I'm the Sustainability Coordinator. The city is, I'm proud to announce the program expansion of our Energy Edge Rebate Program. The city would like to thank our residents and businesses for making smart energy choices by providing cash rebates of up to $1,500 for improving energy efficiency, installing solar energy, and installing electric vehicle chargers. Our Energy Edge Rebate Program was established in 2014, and since then, it has provided 55 rebates totaling about $50,000, using revenue collected through our green building program. Tonight, we are announcing an expansion of the program in addition to the rebates that we have always been offering, including HVAC systems, Energy Star doors and windows, solar, natural gas, and efficient water heaters, and commercial light fixtures, and occupancy sensors. We are also announcing two new categories of rebates. These include solar photovoltaic systems of 5 kilowatts or larger, for which we will provide a $1,500 rebate, as well as electric vehicle supply equipment, for which the rebate will be 50% of the total materials cost, up to a maximum of $1,000. We're also increasing the amounts that we are rebating for insulation. Previously was a maximum of $500, has been increased to a maximum of $1,000, which can cover pretty much an entire attic insulation. And Energy Star reflective roofs, we're increasing to a maximum of $1,500. All rebates are provided on a first-come, first-served basis while funding lasts. To be eligible, you must be a homeowner or business owner within the city limits, in a building that is at least 10 years old. There are some additional eligibility requirements that are listed on the website. And we ask participants to first complete an online energy survey from FPNL, which will help you better understand your energy use and provide recommendations for how you can improve. You will see a link to the FPL survey on our website, along with a link to a short pre-approval application in both English and Spanish, and soon to be translated into Creole. The website is gogreenboyntonbeach.com. So please join us in observing National Energy Efficiency Day this October 5th. Spread the word about our energy rebate program. You can receive cash back on your energy improvement project, what's better than that? You can also have long-term savings through reduced electricity bills, and you will help the city reduce our carbon footprint and be a local leader in sustainability. Thank you. There are brochures available on the program. Yes, Commissioner?
I have two questions. Since the inception of this program, how much money and rebates have we given back?
We've given just about $50,000.
How much have we, you know, budget for this coming fiscal year?
Currently, we have, last I checked, was about $118,000 in the fund.
That's including with the increase?
That's what we currently have available to give away as rebates.
Rebecca, you might want to explain how we charge the portion of the permit fee, what the funding sources, Commissioner, for you?
Yes, this is, in our green building ordinance, which was passed in 2011 and updated in 2015, there is a .05% fee of total construction costs on all building permits that is deposited into this fund to use to, as incentives for green building and sustainability.
So is that new construction or construction in general?
Every, it's all permits.
All construction?
All construction permits, correct.
Rebecca, is that $1,500 the maximum per household, or per type of energy efficiency?
The different items have different maximums, so $1,500 is the maximum for solar PV, for roofs. The other items have lower maximum amounts individually, and then we also are capping the total amount that a household can, or business can obtain within a 10-year period at $1,500. So someone could benefit from one rebate for solar, or they could potentially have a few smaller ones, two or three, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Question.
Yes.
Would you direct the resident to what would be, I guess, the most bang for their buck in terms of what they would be doing? If they have multiple things that they're applying for, would you tell them, okay, this is probably gonna be the thing that they get the more bang for their buck for?
The reason we're increasing attic insulation to 1,000 is because that is the first go-to item to get the most bang for your buck, but that is, depends on your own building, and that's exactly what the FPL online survey will show you. It's a fairly quick survey, just to go through your appliances and use of energy in your home or business, and then it will tell you just that, like what you should focus on. Thank you.
Next, we will proclaim October 15th, 2018, as White Cane Safety Day in recognition of the growing independence and self-sufficiency of blind people in America, and also to gain recognition of the white cane as a symbol of that independence and that self-alliance. Debbie Majors, Grantson ADA Coordinator, will accept the proclamation. Proclamation. Whereas the white cane, which every blind citizen of, in our city has the right to carry, demonstrates and symbolizes the ability to achieve a full and independent life and the capacity to work productively in competitive employment. And whereas the white cane, by allowing every blind person to move freely and safely from place to place, makes it possible for the blind to fully participate in and contribute to our society. And whereas every citizen should be aware that the law requires that motorists exercise appropriate caution when approaching a blind person carrying a white cane. And whereas Florida law also calls upon employers, both public and private, to be aware of and utilize the employment skills of our blind citizens by recognizing their worth as individuals and their productive capacities. And whereas the City of Boynton Beach and our business community, with the cooperative assistance of the Lighthouse for the Blind of the Palm Beaches, can look forward to a continued expansion of employment opportunities for and a greater acceptance of blind persons in the competitive labor market. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim the 15th of October, 2018, as White Cane Safety Day in Boynton Beach, and call upon our schools, colleges, and universities to offer full opportunities for training to blind persons, upon employers, and the public to utilize the available skills of competent blind persons, and to open new opportunities for the blind in a rapidly changing society. And upon all citizens to recognize the white cane as an instrument of safety and self-help for blind pedestrians on our streets and highways.
On our highways? Okay.
Debbie Majors, Grantson ADA Coordinator. Just quickly, I want to thank you all for the proclamation, and I will be delivering it to the Lighthouse for the Blind of the Palm Beaches on Friday, October 5th, from 10:00 to 1:00. They have an open house and a White Cane Safety Event, and they wanted to invite everyone in the community to come and have tours, and they have some speakers that are gonna be there, and they're gonna have some local organizations and talk about their services. So if you know anyone with visual impairments, please make sure that they attend this. Again, it's Friday, October 5th, from 10:00 to 1:00 at Lighthouse for the Blind of the Palm Beaches, which is located at 1710 Tiffany Drive East in West Palm Beach. And there's flyers over here at the doorway. Thank you.
All right. Next is proclaim October as Arts and Humanities Month. Kim Weiss, Chair of the Arts Commission, will be present to accept proclamation. Proclamation. Whereas the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts and cultural organizations, communities, and states across the country, as well as by the White House and Congress for over 30 years. And whereas the arts and humanities embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind. And whereas the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of every American and play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our country. And whereas the arts industry also strengthens our economy by generating 166.3 billion in total economic activity annually, and supports the full-time equivalent of 4.6 million jobs. And whereas since October 5th, 2005, the City of Boynton Beach adopted and supported its Art in Public Places Program, and through the guidance and authority of the Arts Commission has consistently recognized the importance of this industry. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim October, 2018, as National Arts and Humanities Month.
Kim Weiss, Boynton Beach Arts Chairperson for the Arts Commission, and it's my honor and pleasure to accept this proclamation, and I also just want to take a moment and thank the city, the commissioners, and the mayor for the support they're showing consistently to the arts program in Boynton Beach, and all that's happening currently, and all that's planned for the future, for the excitement of the Kinetic Art Festival and Symposium, as well as everything that's being planned for the new town center. So thank you very much.
You get a clap.
Proclamation. Oh, I'm sorry. Proclaim September 15th to the October 15th, 2018, as Hispanic Heritage Month. Would Patricia Trejo be present to accept the proclamation? Proclamation. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month begins on September 15th to celebrate the anniversary when Nicaragua, Honduras, Costa Rica, El Salvador, and Guatemala became independent countries. They are now called Central America. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the rich culture and historic traditions of Hispanic Americans whose roots go back to Mexico, Spain, and the Spanish-speaking nations of South America, Central America, and the Caribbean. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month highlights the achievements and contributions made by Hispanics and Latinos. Whereas the infusion of Latino history and the representation of Latino cultures in curriculum is vital to the academic success of students. Whereas the School District of Palm Beach County supports improvement of academic achievements for all students and ensures adherence to Florida statute 1,003.42, the Study of Hispanic Contributions to the United States. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim September 15th to October 15th of 2018 as Hispanic Heritage Month.
I'm Patricia Trejo, the Administrative Program Planner for Hispanic-Latino Studies for the School District of Palm Beach County. On behalf of the School District, we, I accept this, and I am so grateful that Mayor Grant, you took the time to do that this evening for us. Our office continues to work very closely with our teachers to ensure that Latino history and culture is infused into the curriculum so that the students do find it culturally relevant to them. We are going to be celebrating at the district, at the School District. We invite everyone to come and join us. That's gonna take place on October 12th, on a Friday, from 11:00 to 1:00. We'll have several different schools there to allow our students to showcase and highlight their talents. The idea is to highlight those Hispanic contributions made to the United States through STEAM, through the science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. So we will have Lake Worth Middle School there to be a wax museum so that they can share their talents through highlighting those prominent leaders that made some pretty important contributions, as well as some different performances from Elsie Swain Middle School, Lake Worth Middle. We also have Berkshire Elementary, Don I. Leonard, Forest Hill High School, and we do have some invitees that will also be present as well, ranging from the Hispanic Bar Association, the Hispanic Education Coalition, the Puerto Rican Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce at Palm Beach County, and several different upward leaderships, as well as Caridad, El Sol, the Watermelon Mining Center. We're all coming together to really help and support our students and really just highlight, you know, like we were talking about earlier in the proclamation, as Mayor Grant read, that importance. It is vital to the academic success and helping to achieve, to close the achievement gap with regards to the Hispanic students, so we're working very hard to show that we're there, to advocate and support and celebrate. So everybody's welcome. October the 12th, Friday, 11:00 to 1:00 at the district office. Thank you.
Ms. Trejo, if you wouldn't mind just sending that as a flyer and an email to the Board, I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no more announcements, moving on to public audience.
Mayor, excuse me, before you go to public audience, excuse me, I'm glad to see Chief Gregory in the audience. Chief, if you can come up to the podium, please. I do believe in giving individuals their flowers while they can still smell them, since I'm in the funeral business, I want you to smell yours tonight. Sir, from District 2, good evening. From District 2, we just want to say for the last week and this week, that's all I need to say to you, and just say thank you. You know what I'm telling you thank you for? For the presence in the community. The community itself said to tell you thank you. We are seeing an improvement. I want to tell you first to your face that you're doing a great job. Second of all, I want to say that last night, we had a ladies' meeting at St. John's Missionary Baptist Church, and my phone was ringing off the hook. I know you can't do it all the time, but the lady said that was an officer that stayed in their park, in our parking lot until everyone left, and I just want to tell you, sir, thank you for looking out for the lives of the citizens here in our city. Thank you.
I agree. Police Chief, thank you very much, Commissioner.
Is there any other announcements from the Board? Seeing none, moving on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Please state your name and address for the record before you begin.
Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast, 27th Way. Sorry, I'm sick and have a throat infection. I wanted to ask Vice Mayor Romulus if she would once again be able to judge our Halloween and Christmas contests in our neighborhood?
Funny thing is, I was actually in your front yard today looking for my dog, because she escaped through my yard and went into yours, and I can see that you already started, so, yes.
Oh, weeks ago. I'm all over this.
Yes, Susan, always.
Okay, great, thank you. And you should have knocked, I stayed homesick today, so.
Aw, sorry to hear that.
Could have said hi. Thank you.
Hello. Alexandria Wilson, 1202 Northwest Alexandria Wilson, 1202 Northwest 5th Street. I've been, I haven't been here in a while, in a while, but I've been hearing a lot of things, and I've been reading a lot of good things, so keep up the good work. I hope we continue to redevelop together and get Boynton Beach on one accord. I have a couple of concerns. Calling this maybe can more to your department. I recently purchased a property near the hospital area, and I noticed that there is a lot of potassium, a lot of potassium in the water. Some of my water is coming out pink, and when I keep it in the cup, it's, for a week, it's coming out black. After the meeting, I can send you some pictures of that. So that's all my concerns I have with that, and hope we continue to build Boynton Beach on one accord. Thank you. Thank you.
You got that? Okay. And I did hear a phone. If everyone could please silence their phones, that would be appreciated.
Good evening, Commission. Andrew Padre, 800 North Road. I'm also a member of the Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals. I'm going to attempt to cram five minutes' worth of speech/lecture into three minutes' worth of time. I'm actually here tonight, as many of you know, I've been restoring the Casa Costa commercial for the last two years. None of you are strangers to the pain, to use a delicate word, that I've been through with this city to try to restore and do the right thing in this, with these projects. Unfortunately, it's been one run-in after another. The interpretation of the building official has been less than generous on many of these projects, and I've calculated that I've lost approximately $50,000 or $60,000 between my 12 build-outs to date, just in inefficiencies, in bad judgment, in my opinion, and that sort of thing. I CC'd all of you this morning on my latest debacle. I've got the pizza restaurant over there who is trying to put up an awning in the back. This way, they can have outdoor seating, and they can have more patrons, and that sort of thing. She called me up crying this morning, and she said, "Look." She couldn't get anywhere with the city because apparently there is an ordinance that states that she has to come up with the same awning as the Jamaican restaurant, because it just so happens that the Jamaican restaurant, which is right next door to the pizza place, went first. So of course, I contacted Ed Reese, and to his credit, he ended up sending me this code. But I want you guys to hear this, because I made a recommendation a couple of months ago, and I haven't heard back from anybody regarding my recommendation as to how we can fix this. So I'm going to read parts of this code to you, and I want you to tell me how the layman or private citizen would interpret this. "Awnings and Canopies. Function: Awning shall be of adequate height and depth to provide protection to pedestrian from the elements and used in a manner that accentuates architectural features and embellishments." Very, very subjective. It goes on to say that "the size of an awning should be proportionate to the scale of the host building and the surrounding streetscape." Define "surrounding streetscape," and then tell me how an awning would be proportional thereof. Continues and says, "The appearance and the color of the awning shall enhance the overall design of the building and be compatible with the selected building material." And so I ask you, is wood compatible with brick? Is brick compatible with a polyurethane product? What is compatible? And so ultimately, it finishes up by saying, "All awnings shall incorporate uniformity in their design." Period. But uniformity to what? Uniformity to the existing awnings that may serve a separate purpose up front, so on and so forth. Long story short, I got 14 seconds. I made three recommendations. We need a poster up in this building department immediately. People need to be able to appeal the subjectivity of your code. Secondly, we need to reduce the fee. You can't have somebody paying $250 and expect them to show up before my board. And last, we do need, I'm sorry.
Continue. Yes, I understand.
Okay. And lastly, we're going to need poster, the fee, and we need a reduction in the timeframe. We can't wait two months on some of this stuff. We need to unleash the creativity of the business sector in this city. Please take my recommendations to heart. Institute them so that these subjective codes do not shut down more of your businesses. Thank you.
Andy, before you go, one of your new tenants, Cure, I got my hair cut there last week.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you for having them there.
Oh, yeah, the barber?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. He does a good job. I wanted to see if he did a good job before I went.
Yeah.
Mike Fitzpatrick, 175 Southwest 2nd Street. I haven't read the backups. I'm not sure if it'd be answered, but I have a question about Consent Agenda proposed Resolution D, which is about the easement for Florida Power and Light, for perpetual easement supporting the solar tree and canopies at Oceanfront Park. I don't understand why you'd want to give away perpetual easement. The solar power is changing rapidly. Who knows if it's going to be out there in five or six years? Why, you know, maybe we can make some money with it down the road. I just don't understand why you'd want to give FPL a perpetual easement. So I'd like, you know, during that portion, if somebody could explain that. Thank you.
I'm seeing no more public comments. Public comments is now closed. Moving on to administrative. We have one applicant for the advisory boards. Courtland McQuire for Arts Commission, it is my nomination. I would like to nominate them for the Arts Commission as an alternate. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none, nomination is approved unanimously. We still have openings on the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Education and Youth Advisory Board, and the Historic Resource Preservation Board.
Mayor, excuse me, no one made mention about the board dinner. Are we still having it October? Did I get a flyer? I thought I did.
Eleanor Crusell, Marketing Director. Yes, sir, we are still having it as a date. The flyer that you received is accurate.
And you state a date so that they could hear, just in case somebody did not get an email.
It's, what's the date? I'm sorry.
October 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00?
October 18th, from 6:00 to 8:30 at Benvenidos for those members who are volunteering for city boards and committees. And you should have received an email. We had all the email addresses. We emailed one. We'll follow up tomorrow with those that haven't responded.
Do we need a RSVP?
Yes, sir. We asked them to RSVP.
Okay.
It's October 17th, Wednesday. Did we say?
October 17th, Wednesday. Thank you.
Okay, I got it.
Okay. Oh, no.
If you have any questions, please call the city manager's office, and we'll be happy to help you. Thank you.
And one guest. I remember. Thank you.
One guest.
The board or committee member plus one guest.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That includes us, too, right?
Yes.
All right. Seeing no more administrative, moving on Consent Agenda. I have an request from the Politpole, Item D. Is there any other requests from the commission? Seeing none, we'll move forward with Proposed Resolution Number 18-142. Authorize the city manager to sign the Second Amendment and Second Merendum Solar Lease and Easement Agreement. Both are between the city of Boynton Beach and Florida Power and Light Company for perpetual easement supporting the solar tree and canopies at Oceanfront Park.
I'm going to offer a motion to approve, you know, and hopefully we get a second for discussion.
Thank you.
Discussion?
Yep.
Can you explain and also answer former Commissioner Fitzpatrick's question? I'm just saying, why are you up there, please?
Yes, Commissioner. Gary Dunmire, City Engineer. This, excuse me, this amendment to the memorandum is to allow more easements. And easements is creating connectivity from the infrastructure to the canopies. And so in order to connect them, in order to get the power back out into the FPL grid, we had to extend the easements. And so that's what this amendment's for.
So I believe we have a rental agreement with them for the land?
Yes, we do.
And so this easement provides them in between the, our land and their rental agreement?
Right. So we've got solar canopies, and then we also have the solar array, which is the tree that's out there at Oceanfront Park. And so all the easements are interconnected. The agreement that we have allows, well, FPL pays us for the power that they collect from the grid. And so, yes, the easement connects the canopies to the right-of-way where they can transfer the power back and incorporate it into their grid for sale to the public.
I might not get to answer this question, but how much are we getting from FPL?
I want to say I heard $1,400 a month.
Right. Thank you.
Commissioner Katz?
So just to be clear, that if the agreement with FPL ends, then this easement obviously ends, even though it says perpetual easement, like?
Right. If they take their equipment off the property, yes, we'll be able to remove easements.
No way is us giving or taking, allowing for FPL to have ownership rights to our land, correct?
No, they don't have any ownership. What it does do, it demands that we pay attention to their conduits and whatnot that are on our property. So when we go to do any type of development, we have to be aware of what's in the ground, and we have to work around and coordinate with FPL.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none? All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. May have a motion to remove the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Proposed Resolution Number 18-145. Authorize the city manager to sign an annual service agreement with Motorola, Inc. in the amount of $117,320 for the continued maintenance and repair of the city's radio telecommunications system as a sole-source vendor.
Second.
Discussion from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Proposed Resolution Number R-18-146. Approve the rankings as recommended by the Evaluation Committee and authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with Downs and St. Germain Research of Tallahassee, Florida for public opinion survey services. The agreement shall be for a period of four years commencing on the date the agreement is awarded by the city commission. The total cost over the agreement period is approximately $158,925, of which $47,925 has been included in the fiscal year 1819 approved budget.
Mayor, could we have the city manager or one of her staff explain this? I know I had some questions about why the, why this amount was this high, so the public would understand why, what we're doing here.
Yes. Eleanor is going to come on up.
Ask me any dates, else I wouldn't be able to give it to you. Eleanor Crusell, Marketing Director. Thank you, Commissioner Casello. I took the opportunity to explain to you that this is part of a, one of our strategic initiatives to survey our community members. And what's unique about what we're doing is we're surveying both our residents and our businesses. So when you talk about the cost, you're looking at surveying two components of our community. This helps us connect and engage with the community, but also helps us to become one of the objectives of a high-performing organization. The firm that the Evaluation Committee selected is a very well-known firm in Florida. It has a multitude of bilingual surveyors, so that we're hitting all the demographics that we're, that we have in our community. It also has the ability to compare us to 500 other jurisdictions, so we get an idea of how we're performing against other like municipalities. And any other questions that you may have for me? One year, we'll be doing this survey, which will be done by web, postcard, and phone, as well as cell and house phone. The next year, we'll be doing a focus group. And then the next year, the survey, the next year, the focus group, so that we compare how we improve our services at the community.
Eleanor, could you just explain those percent? They have to reach a certain percentage? They got to continue to do the survey until they reach a certain percentage?
Correct. The bid indicated that they had to have a 95% confidence rate with a plus or minus 5%. So they take your population, and they say that they'll get a percentage of that and guarantee that for us without error.
And this information is going to be shared with our strategic plan?
Absolutely. It will help us with our strategic plan. It also includes that a presentation, a public presentation will be made at a commission meeting to the commissioners and the public.
At what point? Sorry. At what point?
I'm sorry?
Will the presentation, you said that will be made?
The bid indicates that they have to perform their obligation within 120 days, and thereafter the presentation would be made to the commission.
Of their four-year research, or of the four-year research that they're conducting, or when is the evaluation?
Do we have yearly reports?
The first one would be the survey, and that has to be conducted within 120 days and presented to the commission.
And will they present after each, like, when we do the focus groups?
Focus groups, absolutely. There's a presentation included in the bid for each component each year. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I need to know the names that served on that Evaluation Committee. Did we have the city staff, or have individuals from outside?
City staff did that. Serving on the committee was David Scott, Eleanor Crusell, and Rebecca Harvey. The Finance Director and Assistant Finance Director were also in the room. Procurement, excuse me, Procurement Coordinator.
Was there any need that we didn't, why did we did not look out and try to get somebody in the business sector? I'm just saying, you know, since it's going to be targeted in the business sector as well, I'm just saying why we did not go a little step further. Someone from the Chamber of Commerce, I think, should have been on here. This is my, just my opinion.
We did not ask anyone outside the agency.
Okay. You know, my take is, you know, since we're doing something that's going, we're more like responsible, like for the citizens. Okay, I'm just saying, when we're doing something that's going curtail, like the business, I thought it would have been, you know, to our best advantage if we'd have had someone from the Chamber of Commerce, like the president, to serve on the Evaluation Committee. I'm just saying, you know, let's kind of reach out to them to make them a part of what we're doing that's going to affect them.
Okay.
Just my opinion.
Eleanor, I know that we have our census coming up, and I'd want to know if we can work with them when they do their 2020 census, or 2020 survey, to make sure that they make aware of, making sure that everyone is reporting on the census as well.
I can certainly ask the firm if they would do that within their scope of services.
Or is he how much? Yep.
And I don't want anybody to go away. They got, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Vice Mayor?
Mentioned bilingual. What languages?
We can indicate to them what languages are needed, but in our bid specs, we indicated that we would like Creole and Spanish.
And what is their, so you mentioned their methods of evaluation. Can you please repeat those?
The methods of obtaining the surveys would be done through the website or online, would be done by telephone, both cell and hardline, and would be done by a postcard.
And who are they targeting specifically in terms of how, how do they know who to reach out to simply just if they live within this, the parameters of Boynton Beach?
They live within the corporate limits of Boynton Beach, correct.
Okay. And my concern here is, you think about polls and getting information and data from people, sometimes you end up getting pigeonholed whether you want to or not in surveying a certain group of people, and then the other groups maybe who didn't even realize that this was happening. So how do they, how will people know that they are to be a part of this survey and that their voice or their opinion matters in what information is being collected?
That is up to the company that's providing the service to us. We certainly can give input into that. We would have to work with them on how we get out that public relations campaign. I will say that they've done multiple communities as close as Palm Beach Gardens, Miami, with the same sort of specifications.
Let me make my question more clear. How effective have they been in being able to target and get responses from minority audiences?
Go ahead. Sorry. Well, it's a requirement in the bid. One of the things that I think is really neat about bringing, not just us doing a monkey survey, is they, they are given the demographics of the city, what our populations consist of, the, you know, race, ethnicity, what have you, and they have to go in and get representative samples. I don't know what that actually is as far as numerically, but they have to go in and they will target each of those demographics to make sure that they have a scientifically sound representative sample of what is, what our community is comprised of. So they're going to, and until what Commissioner Casello is referring to, until they reach, again, I don't know what that, the number is, but until they feel they get that response or reach that portion of that demographic that they're trying to get, they have to keep reaching out until they get the amount of data they're looking for, like, say, out of the Spanish community, the Haitian community, I don't know how exactly, the age groups. So they'll keep diving in till they get what it is that makes it an accurate representative sample.
Statistical.
So it's a statistical, which, God, I can't talk to, but that's the part that I think was most attractive, is how they go about getting the data. So, you know, what, you're not going to hear from just one community, so one that typically doesn't respond, they're going to go after to get it.
Last question. What are they surveying exactly?
That is a project between the city and the person that we have suggested to, to secure, to come up with those questions. So what we want to measure is how are we performing? So what we want to measure is how are we performing, how are our city services performing? What more do we feel, do you feel like we should be providing? Are you satisfied with garbage pickup? Are you safe in your neighborhood? We have several samples that I can share with you of other cities that have questions, but that is something that the company, learning about our city, as Lori said, in our bid specs, we're very specific about our demographics, very, in fact, the company admired what we had provided them for demographics, and then sit with the city team and develop those questions. And then those questions would be asked every year, so we have a sampling of whether we're going higher or lower, we're increasing our services, we're maintaining with the community.
I got two questions. Is that including the city commission for city services?
The question?
Oh, yeah. Are we going to ask the residents how, what they feel about the city commission?
We could certainly add that to one of the questions.
And so, and that's kind of what I would want, is that if it's possible for us to have a meeting with them before, because, you know, we each have, represent district and the city, and I would think that we can definitely provide a lot of insight to them. This is a four-year contract where the second year is going to be $5,000 for the focus group, and then, you know, if they help get, you know, an extra 50 people on the census, that's more than $1,000 per person, it's going to pay for itself within the next 10 years. So I think this is something valuable that we need to go ask the public, because we definitely hear from a small sample and need to have these professionals, because I was looking at the statistical analysis that they're doing, and it's been a long time since I took AP Statistics, and I don't know that equation or how to figure it out anymore. So I'm definitely for this and look forward to hearing from the rest of the board. Commissioner McCray, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, since I lost my place.
And then Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like to say to staff, I wasn't beating up on staff by this evaluation committee, but I just felt that it should have been a little more broader, that's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I have no intention to hold up this vote, because I do agree with you, Mayor, I do believe that it's important to survey our residents and find out more of what they're thinking and try to get that open book from them. What I would request is that staff simply gives us something more of an email or presentation at next meeting to just elaborate more on some of these concerns that I've raised and maybe other individuals have raised about what's being surveyed, with some of the questions, how effective is this group at being able to get turnout and responses from their past survey initiatives? I would be way more comfortable in supporting this if I know this information offhand rather than just kind of hearing offhand comments from members of staff. I would like some more concrete information.
Ms. Katz, thank you for waiting.
Yeah, just in regards to some of the comments, I think that, you know, the fact that we're paying a company this much money, presumably they're qualified and therefore their statistical analysis of the population and ultimately their survey results will reflect that. With regards to the commission individually sitting down with the company, I would absolutely urge against that. If they want to produce some sort of survey that they would give to each commissioner, we would submit responses to, but the entire point of contracting with a firm that does this is to maintain objectivity, so I wouldn't want anyone, myself or anyone else in the commission, to try to put their thumb on the scale by pushing issues or whatever. I think that objective statistical analysis only degrades itself when you start to involve people's opinions or their own individual thoughts outside of the survey sample. So I don't, you know, oppose that there's some direction about giving a survey to us to produce information for them, but I think direct contact with us inherently corrupts the objectivity of a survey for the citizens. So I would caution against anything too direct, because, you know, that's their job, we're paying them a lot of money to remain objective.
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to say this to the city manager, in this agreement, we have an out clause, right, that they're not performing.
You always have language in there, I don't, yes.
We do.
Legal, make sure we do.
That's good enough for me, thank you.
And Mayor, if I may, then what we'll do is I'll have Eleanor talk to the vendor and provide like a night, kind of a narrative, a little bit better summary than what we can, more statistically sound, for the Vice Mayor to kind of explain, and I'll send that out to you in an email.
Absolutely.
That helps, and then that gives you a little better about their approach and so forth.
Well, hopefully they'll make an announce, be here for an announcement that they're starting the survey for the public, because that might make.
Yeah, that won't be for some time probably, but I think the Vice Mayor will want to try to get her that information.
Okay.
So we'll get something to you shortly.
All right. Did I have a motion to approve?
Yes.
All right, and there was a second. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Award the bid for two-year contract for landscape maintenance to Blue Marlin Investment Company, Duval Landscape, LV Superior Landscaping, Property Works, and Vincent &amp; Sons Landscaping. The estimated annual expenditure is $1,080,896, which includes the award amount of $900,896 and $100,000 for additional services for nuisance abatement, median restoration, and unforeseen requests. The bid allows for three one-year renewals. May I have a motion to approve?
No more.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Question?
Yes.
I'd like to ask staff, I'm just saying, did we look at local businesses and also minority businesses when we did this? And if so, what was their feel on this?
Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works, yes, I do believe that was sent out to local businesses. We did have, actually you're awarding to one of the local businesses. I don't know about the minority part, I'd have to defer to procurement as far as specifics to that category.
Just give me the name of the local business, please.
Vincent &amp; Sons is a Boynton Beach business.
Thank you, I'm good. Thank you.
Andrew, could you just explain, is the additional $100,000 for nuisance abatement?
I believe that's an as-needed service for like mowing, so if somebody doesn't mow their lawn, community standards can go out, they can actually have that vendor go out and mow the lawn. So it's not just nuisance abatement, it's for other tasks as well.
Okay, which we didn't collect the money for in form of a lien of some sort.
On the ones that are nuisance abatement, yes.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Approve the purchase for Copan Let's Play Inc. utilizing the U.S. Community's contract for an estimated cost of $150,000 for the Oceanfront Park Playground Equipment Design and Installation with the Acceptance of the Copan Americas Match Funding Grant awarded to our agency in the amount of $50,000.
No more.
Second.
Question?
Yes.
In regards to this company, I know it's a reputable company, is there any way we could see like what they're going to put over there before they put it over there? A picture, it's worth a thousand words?
He's running from the back for me. So yes, I thought that you might ask for a picture, so.
Not only me, hopefully everybody.
The public, yes, absolutely, so we can show the public and show off our new playground. In actuality, this was a grant funded as well. The project is a $150,000 playground at Oceanfront Park. $50,000 of that dollars came from Compan, which is the vendor who we're working with. You want to advance to the next slide? So this was the area where the existing playground is located, and the playground will be going back in that similar, in that same place. Next slide. I know this one's a little harder to see, but if you look from the right to the left, you have a, what is called a mega tower, some smaller apparatuses, another smaller child apparatus, and then like a fitness area for adults, and I have some pictures of that, show it. So this is the larger apparatus that'll be closer to the parking lot for the larger kids, and then you have the smaller apparatus, which is called the mega tower. And then these are a couple of the other little items. This is called a supernova, this is supposed to be a very popular, the one that's in the middle, that looks like a life preserver. They said it's a very, very popular item that they're putting into the parks. And then the other part is some fitness equipment that goes in for adults. And that's what we're putting in.
Let me ask you a question, how does this stand up with heat? I'm just saying, with coming from the sun, you know, called?
Yeah, this is all, I'm sorry, Glenda has the specifics on this, I'll let her bring her up. It's all galvanized steel, right?
Yeah, it's all been galvanized, and we felt that they're probably the best for any equipment that will withstand the salt air and the salt environment.
The plastic is recycled.
Yeah, and the plastic is all recycled. They do use a little bit of stainless steel, I remember her telling us in some of the fittings. And I'm trying to remember what the warranty was, something like 10 years on most of it.
Okay, Glenda, I think you all are missing my question, the slides, I'm just saying, going down bathing suit swim trunks, I'm just saying, the heat to the rears, okay, I say it like that.
Yeah, they're plastic.
Okay.
Sorry, I missed that.
Thank you.
I missed the slide.
Commissioner Crusello.
It was good to know the other stuff, too.
I have a question, are there going to be some type of shade shields that we have over the playground equipment like we have out here?
Right now, there's no shade sales plan for this. I know the one structure does have a little roof on it, above it, but there's no shade sales plan for the site.
I think that would tie into the question that the.
There are some trees here that exist, so there is some shade that is provided by trees, and the apparatuses will be placed close enough underneath the trees as we can get them.
Okay, so there's some form of shade on the equipment, okay.
Any further comments from the board, Vice Mayor?
Have any ADA allowances?
Yes, this is the ADA of apparatus as well.
Great, thank you.
By the way, just one other thing, they only give out five grants a year. It's a competitive grant, they have 5,000 applicants, we're one of five that won this grant from the company.
Nationwide?
Nationwide.
I kind of like when you toot your own horn.
It wasn't me, it was, all goes to Glenda and Gail and I believe Stephanie, yeah, they did a lot of hard work on this.
Steph.
Seeing any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Item E, approve the bid for annual supply of pipe fittings and accessories to the following three companies, Core &amp; Main, Ferguson Enterprises, and Fortaline, on a primary, secondary, and third basis to the lowest, most responsive responsible bidders, who met all specification with an estimated annual expenditure of $210,000. May I have a motion to approve?
No more.
Second for discussion?
Yes.
I need to know, how much money did we spend last year?
Colin Groff, City Manager, last year we spent $204,000.
And you feel like, yeah, whether you feel it or not, $210,000 is enough, I'm good.
All right. Any other discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearing, the city commission will conduct these public hearings in its dual capacity as local planning agency and city commission. Jim?
Mayor, we have a few items that go together. A has three ordinances attached to it, and B is a site plan associated with the same project. If the applicant has no objection, even though the first item is legislative and not quasi-judicial, we'll combine all the items together and do one hearing.
Yes.
And so if the applicant will consent to that, I will read the ordinances and then we can proceed with the table.
I got to move from the table first.
Motion to remove from the table.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
And item B as well.
Yes, sir, likewise, yeah. Everything table, yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, all right. Jim, you may begin.
Okay, ordinance 18024, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, annexing .3 acres of land that is contiguous to the city's limits within Palm Beach County that will upon annexation constitute a recently compact addition to the city boundaries, providing that the proper land use designation and proper zoning of the property shall be reflected in separate ordinances to be passed simultaneously herewith, providing for conflict severability and an effective date, providing that this ordinance shall be filed with the clerk of the Circuit Court of Palm Beach County, Florida upon adoption. Ordinance.
Want to read them all out?
Yeah, let me read them all at one time if you would, Mayor, and then the hearing will go along with them. 18.025, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 8938 by amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan for property commonly known as Goodstone Townhomes and described herein, owned by Goodstones LLC, changing the land use designation from commercial high with the underlying medium-density residential MR5, maximum density of five dwelling units per acre, chapter five, excuse me, chapter five, CH5, to special-density high residential SHDR, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. And ordinance 18-026, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 02013 to reason on a parcel of land described herein and commonly referred to as Goodstone Townhomes from commercial general to infill plan unit development, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anybody who intends to testify or comment, please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you. Before the applicant goes, the commission previously all made disclosures about contact with Mr. Bradley Miller, who's standing at the podium. Would each commissioner please confirm that those discussions were related to this agenda item?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Bradley Miller of Miller Land Planning at 508 East Boynton Beach Boulevard here in Boynton Beach, and here representing the applicant of Goodstone Townhomes LLC, Mr. Guy Florent, who is here in the audience with us tonight. This is, the presentation's going to include the request here of annexation, land use, and zoning. We also have a site plan component that I do understand goes on to the next hearing, for the second hearing, but the presentation really includes that for you as well as the public. This site's located on South Federal Highway, the south end of the city, at the southeast corner of Federal and Chucka Road. And surrounding it is the Waterside Community to the north, we've got Seaborn Cove and Bayfront that's on the west side of Federal Highway, and then there's a pocket of, single family of trade winds to the south, and then some single-family homes that's immediately east on Chucka Road. It is .3 acres. Our request here tonight is to annex the property into the city of Boynton Beach. Currently, the property is in the unincorporated area of Palm Beach County, has a commercial designation, has a commercial zoning and future land use. So the parcel itself would come into the city, and then with the first reading and second reading of these ordinances that Mr. Sheriff read, it would implement the land use to go to the residential designations that we're requesting. And we are requesting that it goes from a commercial high designation, which is the highest level of commercial that you can have in a county, at .3 acres. It really, it's a very small parcel to develop as a commercial site anyway, so, and we're proposing that the land use go to a special high-density residential designation. The zoning would go from the general commercial of the county into IPUD, which is an infill planned unit development. It's in your code to accommodate smaller parcels like that, like this property, to be able to come up with a development plan that makes sense. Our site plan is on the screen, the application, once it gets to you, a second reading will be for four townhomes. They front up on Federal Highway, that's kind of the reddish area there. The light tan area is the driveway that leads in into the development. When we first submitted this, we actually requested five units, and the density that we're asking for with the special high-density residential allows up to five. Your staff did their job and beat us up a little bit, and we agreed that the four units, actually I think it does make a better plan. What it does allow is it provides for six additional parking spaces. Two of those would belong to the two end units, which also have a one-car garage. The two middle units have two-car garages, and so as an overall, there's a requirement of 2.15 spaces per unit. By this plan, we're providing three parking spaces per unit, so we provide some additional space. There's some rec area, I won't go through all of the detail of that, I can save that for our next hearing. Rec area that satisfies the code, this is backing up to a canal at the southeast corner, the bottom right of the slide there, so there's some opportunity for the residents to take advantage of that water space. So there's some opportunity for the residents to take advantage of that water space. When you put it into the plan, you can see how it falls into the aerial and it really continues the, kind of the design that Waterside has already established on that side of the road. These are the architectural elevations. They are three story units. They're in the range of 3,000 square feet each and they're a variation of three and four bedroom units. I'll go through these quickly. If there's questions on the floor plan, if we want to get into that, I'd be happy to go back to it, but I'm kind of leaving it with the annexation land use and zoning at the time. At our, at the planning and development board meeting, there were a couple of concerns and requests that actually ended up as conditions of the planning and development board. One came from the residents. There's some drainage issues that are out there with Chucker Road. If you drive out there, actually, you can even see it from a Google Earth street view, there is some drainage, there's kind of a dip into our project. The development of the site itself, I think, will help cure that problem and we've committed to a condition of approval that's part of the site plan to improve that portion of Chucker Road that fronts on our property. And with our driveway, we'll tie it in and that drainage system will improve on that drainage concern. The other was the requests from Ms. Oyer from the planning and development board that we include some additional plants to attract butterflies. So you'll find that as part of your condition and which we're agreeing to. And our landscape architect is here to talk butterflies if you wish. Otherwise, we ask for your support here in first reading for the annexation, the land use change and the zoning change. And I'd be happy to address any of your questions and if I could, reserve some time after public comment to address any of their comments.
Sounds good.
Real quick, Bradley, that the bus stop that you're going to move, how much further south are you moving it down to?
I believe it's going to be within the front edge right now. It's closer to Chucker Road, if I recall. I would have to look at that. I can take a look at that and give you a more definitive answer for the site plan part for the next reading.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. Bradley, in regards to the 3,000 square feet, okay, is that for the two on the end or all four? One, two, three, four?
They vary a little bit in square footage. The end units are a little bit smaller than the middle units, but they're generally in that square footage range.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we had it for the record because you said all units was 3,000 square foot, and I wanted to make sure. Okay, in regards to the drainage, okay, if you build this project, is there a connection for the drainage? This is what my concern is.
The drainage system is actually a, an exfiltration trench that's built underneath the parking lot. Peruv is here, our civil engineer, if you want to get a more detailed description of it. And then, so that collects the drainage and actually, and just give me a nod, does it connect to the drainage system along Federal Highway for outfall?
Come down, but my take is that I don't want to put something in. My take is that, and the street flood, I'm just making sure that we're not building anything where we're going to produce a street that's going to flood.
Yeah. Typically, we've got a project right now and a road that there's really no drainage system there at all currently. So the development of the property is going to put in a drainage system to accommodate not only our project, but also that portion of Chucker Road that abuts us.
Right, but Mr. Miller, with the drainage running down and as a dip, the water's settling there and it's going somewhere, this is my concern, you know.
Right.
Okay.
And the design and the development of the site will take that dip away and it'll improve that situation.
We'll open it up to public and then if you have any further comments.
Okay, thank you.
So if anyone from the public would like to come up, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name's Carol Landry and I live at 815 Chucker Road. And I'm not quite the point lot, but I'm the last house before the point lot of Chucker Road. At the last meeting, we asked that that dip be fixed if they were going to have their entrance there and it would also be good for them to fix it. So their new tenants don't have to drive through a very large puddle, which I have pictures of for you if you want afterwards. But also, what's been brought to my attention by one of the residents on the street that's lived there for many years, much longer than me, is that we call it Lake Chucker down in front of my house and his house. My house is a new home, so it's high. I've built up high. But the other houses on the street are older homes and it floods a lot. And he said if they fix that dip at the top of the road, that they're probably not going to be able to get into their cars. I don't, I'm not an engineer, I don't understand all this, but I just feel like that needs to be really looked into because we don't want to create a flooding problem for these longtime residents. It's already a known problem, the giant puddle at the entrance and then after heavy rains, the big puddle in front of my house. When I built my house, in order to help it a little bit, we put a lot of the crushed limestone rock with drainage, which however they did it, I don't know, but it was all permitted and everything, so it's fine. But something is going to have to be done, otherwise some of my neighbors are going to be stranded in their homes after heavy rains. And I'm afraid that what they do at the top is going to cause that problem. Another thing that I saw on the slide up there when they showed the aerial view of Chucker Road, if they move that bus stop to the top of Chucker Road, it's going to be so tight because it's very tight right now. That road is a one-way road. Every single day, if there's cars coming and going, which there always are, I have no idea why there's so much traffic on this little road, I have to pull over into the lot where they're going to build their townhomes in order to let trucks and cars out of there. So if that lot's not there and there's a wall, you know, two cars can't pass each other. And it looks narrow up there. And then if you go and you put a bus stop right there on the corner, too, these people are going to run over by cars. The other problem is emergency vehicles. If that's all walled up, because we have Waterside on the south side, then if we put a wall for this place on the other side, on the south side, then we have a wall on the north side, south side, and this little narrow road that nobody can get in and out. I take pictures this week and I was sending some of the pictures to a man named Mike Rump. Delivery trucks constantly are down Chucker Road for Waterside. There's a lot of condominiums in Waterside. Now we're going to have the townhomes at the top. And please don't think we're opposed to the townhomes. We're not. That lot is a nuisance. It's not maintained by the owners. That lot has had people living on the lot in the underbrush. It's a constant source of trash. It's ugly. So if they build a nice facility there, we're happy. What we're concerned about is the traffic it's going to create coming down Chucker Road. Almost daily, I or one of the other residents have to go out and help a truck get off of Chucker Road. Because when they get to the end, it's fenced to the point lot, so they can't go straight and turn around at the point lot where there's a big driveway. They have to back into my driveway. Well, it's not a very big driveway and then the house across the street, they've had their landscaping wrecked, I've had my stuff hit, my mailbox is right there, and it's just a constant thing. So I don't know what the solution is and I'm not trying to tell you what the solution is. I'm just saying there's a problem and it's only going to get worse if something's not done about the drainage and about the traffic on Chucker Road. There is a little tiny sign up there that says private road, no turnaround or something to that effect, but nobody looks at it. So I was thinking maybe somehow, just as you get to the east side of this townhome project they're doing, they could make like maybe a half of a cul-de-sac or something where residents or whoever can turn around and leave and have a big sign there, some nice signage that says, you know, narrow road, no turnaround, whatever the lingo is, to keep all these trucks and cars from going down there. Just the other day, I mean, it's already hard when the garbage man's coming. I have to time when I'm leaving so that I can get in and out. I have to allow extra time. Not a big deal, nobody cares. But it's just like, there was a semi truck, there was a van, and the truck is trying to back out and the van's coming in and I'm pulling out of my driveway and it's this little one-way road. It's just, it's bad. So I'm just really concerned about what's going to happen with all their traffic and the, you know, delivery trucks getting lost and things like that. So I would like to have that addressed. And like I said, we're happy to have the townhomes there. We just want to make sure the drainage and the traffic is under control or it's going to become a bigger problem and it already is. That's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No?
My question is, Mr. Miller-
You did, I'm sorry, yes, Commissioner McCray, you have a question for her?
I have a question for Mr. Miller, the two of them, because I might, I don't mind. You know, my concern is the drainage. I already addressed that, but my concern, now that she brought up another point, is that you all do a traffic study, I'm just saying, about this road. You know, I didn't, I was discussing today, but I'm just saying, do staff, you know, with the emergency vehicles, are y'all having problems? Somebody need to address that for me. They're going to address it.
Okay.
Please state your name, address for the record.
My name is Arthur Schilling. I live on Chucker Road 2, 18 Chucker Road. The dip in the road he's talking about, it's up at the end by Waterside on Chucker and he's going to improve and change that. I don't know where it's going to go. It evolved. It's just that it's sunk down and no water's supposed to come off of Waterside because any of the water that does come down there, it all comes down on the end of the street. I'm on the end of the street and I get in my car with bags on my feet. If my driveway isn't high enough, it'd have to be raised. So in order to keep my feet dry, I have to put bags on my feet. The pictures that were up here didn't show any kind of access from US1. It's all from Chucker. Maybe, I don't know, they're going to go on the backside of it there and into Trade Winds on the Turner or whatever, but the pumps, the water pumps for Boynton Beach are right there, too. So it made it look very pretty with grass and he said two acres per unit. I don't know how that's possible, but yeah, the road is, the traffic and the drainage are big issues. And the road is dedicated at 20, it's paved at 10. And you cannot pass, two cars cannot pass on there. When one comes down and another one comes up, you have to use someone's driveway. All right, this is going to be a tremendous imposition. I do have some curious, I'm curious about why there is an annexation going on at the same time. Because at one time, that end of the street was a trailer park. So it had enough density, I think, to accommodate four homes. But, so I'm curious why it's piggybacked on, these two things are going together. I don't, maybe someone explain that and I don't want to be completely in the dark or stupid either, so. See if I had anything else. I don't know how you're going to improve the drainage. Right now, I think they're using that canal as a drainage, not just Waterside and not just Bayfront that's across the road. They have, I believe, an access from going underneath US1 to that canal. That canal has that drainage and it has the drainage from Trade Winds that's always been there. And if they're going to add some more to it, I think we were abusing the use of the water. And septic tanks, that's okay, it's soaking down into the ground, but to push it off into the canals, it's not right. I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Sir, before you, thank you, before you sit down, sir, excuse me, you made statement, you said that two acres per unit, what the presenter said was two cars per unit.
Oh, he said that?
Two cars, yes, sir.
Well, even that, no.
I'm not worried about that, but it wasn't two acres because they only said a street point and then, yeah, then you come up with eight acres. I'm just saying, we have way more land we didn't need. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for correcting me. Yeah.
Yeah, Bob Stevens, 812 Chucker Road, developer for 40 years. At the site of the proposed townhouses, I think there ought to be a passageway encroaching into their property so that the traffic, when you get a 40-foot truck, they back around in my driveway and you can't do that. It runs over the flower beds and everything else. So when Carol's coming out or anybody else is coming out, there's absolutely no place on a 10-foot wide pavement to pass. Additionally, so you've got to encroach into somebody's driveway. And now with the new development, you afforded an opportunity to have a space so you can slide over there and let the other guy pass so you can get out. Otherwise, you're just going to have a traffic jam. Or you're backing a 40-foot truck out into Highway 1. How does that work for you? Highway 1 is about a 45 mile an hour traffic and it's packed. Sometimes in a day, I wait three or four minutes to get out. So I rest my case.
Yes, Commissioner Cassella.
I got a question. Why are these large trucks and vehicles going down Chucker Road if it's all residential? Why?
Sir, I couldn't hear you.
Why are these large 40-foot trucks going down Chucker Road if it's all single family residential?
Well, I've talked to some of the drivers. The GPS stuff directs them down there looking for, what's the name of it?
Waterside.
Huh? Wait, whatever it is. Huh?
Waterside.
Waterside. And they say, oh, it's screwed up. And so there they are because of the GPS. I had a gal come over the other day and she had her car, she was looking for something. She says, oh, what's the address? She says, 31295 Chucker Road. I said, that address doesn't exist. And then I read the fine print and said Waterside. There's just a lot of confusion.
Do you think with some improved signage down at the end of Chucker Road would help-
They have a sign that's the size of an eight and a half by 11.
So maybe some new signage down at the end of the road might bait that some of that problem?
Minimally, you need a sign that can be read. And I don't think the drivers, no offense to drivers, but they don't read the sign. Because it definitely says private road, no turnaround. And believe me, there is no turnaround. I've got a 40-foot RV coach. I pull in there, the only way I can get out is back all the way down. And the guys like the garbage truck, they come in and they back out. I've never been at the top of the hill or top of the street to figure out what are they doing to get back on Federal. I guarantee you, they're backing into Federal. If they don't have but one driver, that's a good trick. Because your motor's up there, your back end's over there, it's 40 feet away. It's a real hazard.
The residents there on Chucker Road now, you don't have any type of HOA, homeowners association? It's all individually owned?
It's before my time.
Okay.
The street, as I understand, was dedicated to us, I guess the residents, what, how long ago? She had some paperwork on it.
About the garbage trucks, I do know how they get out.
You have to state your name again for the record.
Carol Landry, 815 Chucker Road. The garbage trucks, all of them, come all the way down to my end and then they have to back all the way out. And then the way they get off the street now, instead of backing on to US1, is they go right onto this lot where the townhomes are going to go. So now, the garbage truck will have to back on to US1. So something needs made wide up at the top where the garbage truck can, you know, maneuver and these trucks can maneuver. And the other thing, the reason why we get so many trucks on Chucker Road, just like he said, but there's a lot of deliveries to Waterside, I think. There's a lot of units in that. And they turn on Chucker Road looking for Waterside and now they're going, they also just come down there sightseeing, like not just the trucks, but the cars. There's lots of people just down that road. I don't know why. But then as far as the deed, the road was deeded to the residents of Chucker Road and I have the paperwork on that. So I would imagine that the people that own the lot at the top where they're going to build these condos also are part owners in this road. But I have it right here, if you would like me to pass it around.
Okay. Commissioner Cuts?
But you're right.
But you're right. I have no idea why a 40-foot truck would come down an 10-foot wide street and then figure out how he's going to turn around. It doesn't compute. And I've been in transportation for decades.
Well, they don't know it's dead end.
It says no turnaround.
Well, I know, I know.
And I think it does say dead end. Now, if I'm driving a 40-foot truck, I see dead end. And you can already see it's narrow. The trucks are as wide as the road.
Yes, Commissioner Katz.
Basically, we have a problem.
I'm sorry. Are you finished? Is there any further comments you would like to have?
Sorry?
Are there any further comments?
No.
Okay, thank you. You can stay up there. Board Member Katz.
Thank you. So my question in following this traffic-related conversation is that the only aspect of the existing traffic concerns and problems that you seem to be vocalizing is that the property owner trying to develop it has had these trucks illegally use his property to make turns. It's an existing problem, but now the request is to have this property owner sacrifice some of their property to address a problem that exists before and has nothing to do with their project. So I hear and sympathize with the traffic concern, but all this reference to trucks and the other developments to the north, it seems like the request is to force this property owner to alleviate a problem that already exists that really has nothing to do with their property. So I understand the concern, but I can't personally request the property owner give up a piece of their property to alleviate a problem that has nothing to do with their property, other than the fact that right now people illegally use that property to make turns because they get lost down the street. So that's one with regards to the traffic. I hear the concern, and it sounds terrible. And per question over from another commissioner, I don't fully understand how these people keep going down your road when it's clear that they... It should be clear to them that they shouldn't be going down the road. So with regards to the traffic, I don't know exactly what this property owner could do versus the collective property owners on the street, whether it's posting more signage or doing whatever you could do collectively. I think that was another question, if there's no HOA, I guess. You know, it'll be up to the property owners to form some sort of agreement to address this in a meaningful way. With regards to the drainage concerns, I think that's valid if they alleviate the drainage concerns on their property, and that leads to bigger drainage concerns for the adjacent properties to the east. One thing I would say that in conversation with staff came up is that your properties could choose to annex themselves to the city, at which point the city would then be responsible to some degree for the drainage issues, and the city might be able to alleviate them in the future. So I'd ask Bradley Miller to come back up at some point and address the concerns about the shifting drainage from this property potentially to these other properties, because that seems valid. But again, with the traffic, it sounds like your street has traffic problems entirely unrelated and predating this project. So I don't know if it's their responsibility to give up valuable land to create some sort of additional roadway to address the existing traffic issues.
Oh, excuse me. The... How many parking spaces are allotted or are needed, required?
I think he said 2.15 per unit, and I believe...
But how many are allocated versus numbers? Give me exact numbers.
I believe the requirement was 2.15. So at four units, I guess that would be 8.6.
He's got 12.
So Collins?
Okay, so anyway, you have one or two extra spaces, correct? So he's not giving up anything. We just don't want a wall so that somebody could slide into that area. Because what's going to happen is the garbage truck is going to turn into that place to turn around to get back on the street.
Well, I mean, again, even, he is giving up something, because by giving up land and giving up those parking spaces, if you go to buy a townhouse and it has one less...
The parking spaces are only used, if you excuse me, at night. During the day, there's nobody there anymore. They're going to work.
Well, that's, again, that's not... This is private property. It's really not for us to decide if they do or don't use it. But again, I think I've kind of... The drainage issue to me is a valid concern, that the traffic issue is a concern for the street. But I don't think it's a unilateral obligation by this property owner.
I acknowledge your understanding of the situation. As far as the water goes, I took a picture the other day. The circle of water is about 20 feet or more and about six to eight inches deep. And it runs... It'll run right into that lot. So it has to be fixed. That's a given. So I assume that you're not going to approve this unless that's fixed properly.
Well, I, again, I'd request Bradley Miller come up after other comments are made. But I think that it's a valid concern, and I would hope that's not the intention, and everything's being built to spec and with consideration for where that water would run off. I'm sure he could answer that more than I could.
So, Board, do you have any further questions for this speakers? Seeing none, thank you so much. Yes, you may. Please state your name again for the record.
Carol Landry, 815 Chucker Road. So I understand what you're saying. It's not this developer's problem that the road has traffic. And you're right, it's not. And he shouldn't have to give up property. I understand why you're saying that. But my concern is still the fact that it's coming off of US-1 onto a one-lane road. And that just sounds like it's going to create an accident, because when people come to the stop sign at the top of Chucker Road, say it's one of these trucks or a car or whatever, and then there's also a bus stop right here, and there's a wall for their complex here and a wall for Waterside here, it's very tight. I mean, I'd invite you to my home. I'll make you lunch if you guys want. I'll come out and look at Chucker Road. It's just, once you wall that all up, I don't even know how a fire engine would make a turn to get in there. Maybe the garbage truck can't even make the turn to get in there. It's that narrow. So anyway, I just want you to be aware that it's a potential big problem up there.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
This isn't a question for you, Ms. Landry. This is a question just for staff or our city attorney to clarify. This road is not in our jurisdiction, correct?
Yeah, no, it's not currently.
It's not belong to Boynton Beach, therefore who's responsible for maintaining or fixing any drainage issues or wide lane issues with that road?
It appears, based on the county records, that the county road is, but it looks like the county has given it to... If they have the records, which I'd love to have a copy of, if the county can dedicate their right-of-way. It was county right-of-way. It looks like that if they have those records showing that they have ownership, that the county dedicated it to the property owners because of the narrow sides of the road.
Well, I believe that's something that perhaps these residents that live on Chucker Road can tag along with our Assistant City Manager here and see if that's something that can be worked in. As Commissioner Katz mentioned earlier, if that is something they're willing to do, because all of these issues that have been brought up as a commission or as a city, we cannot help, whether we wanted to or not, to fix these, because it is not our jurisdiction. It is not our place to, in one way or another, say, to put our noses in. We can't do anything. We can't help in any way. And really, right now, the item that we're discussing is simply this property owner and their ability, whether or not, to build the property that they're asking to build. So I understand the problems that may arise from that. But being that we have no jurisdiction to touch any of the other resolutions to the problem, we really can't do anything. I hate to say it that way, but it really comes down to jurisdiction at this point.
I just got a quick question. If we annex this property, this parcel here, do we also annex the road that it fronts? Is that part of the deal? Is that how that works?
We're going to have to look at... We're going to have... When we reviewed this, it looked like it was county road, which means it would just stay county. If the county has given it to them but not recorded it correctly, which may have happened, we need to look at that before a second reading.
Okay, but my question is, if we annex a piece of property, are we responsible for the frontage of the road that fronts it?
No, the responsible party is the person that owns the road. So it's either going to be the county or the property owners. It would not be the city.
Thank you.
So what we're annexing is simply the property and up to the property line?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. There are many examples of private roads and private driveways within the boundaries of the city right now. This would just be one more like that.
Any further comments from the board? Seeing none. We'll have the applicant representative answer any questions or make any further comments.
Thank you, Mayor, again, Bradley Miller.
Excuse me. Something just went off in my head. This is back to staff. Okay, talking about these fire trucks. Okay, if it's a county road, are we responsible for doing fire protection for them?
They are utility customers, so there are utilities in the road. I don't know how far up it goes, because I don't have my utility maps in front of me. But there are some utilities on that road. So wherever, if they're utility customers, we would provide that. If they're not utility customers, we wouldn't be providing that. I don't have my utility map, so I can't answer that specifically, but I mean...
That's for fire.
Now, fire, that's a question for the fire department. I don't know if we service that area and the unincorporated area, if we have an interlocal...
Police department, I'm... Anybody.
I'm wondering, Jeff, do you know through mutual aid, are we servicing that road? Do you have any idea? If we get... Does a 911 call get transferred over to us?
Yep. And if you don't know and would like to come up, we are going to have to have a second reading. So we can get all the answers by then.
You may not know off the top of your head. Do you know?
I would have to do some further research, but what I understand is that that is a county area that's not annexed into the city of Boynton Beach. And there are some responses, but with regards to the roadway, it wouldn't matter what jurisdiction that it's in, because there are legal requirements for how wide the roads are when the builders go in there. So that would go through the engineers, and they would make sure the roads are wide enough for a fire truck or a rescue truck to be able to access those roads. So it wouldn't matter as far as what city they responded there.
Okay, staff, clarification. I need to know if county provides fire protection, police protection, or the city of Boynton. Please, clarification for Commissioner McCray. Thank you.
Sir.
Again, thank you, Bradley Miller, Miller Land Planning. Actually, let me touch on the fire question here, since it's fresh. As part of this review process, not only is it your planning and zoning department and engineering department, but fire reviews this as well. And they have reviewed this from the city's standpoint for access to this property and being able to serve it. Whether there's the legal responsibility that gets into these utility zones that Mr. Graff was talking about, those get sensitive between cities and counties. But that's something that we can nail down in between.
He's missing the boat. Mr. Miller, I understand what you're saying. Your property, if it's annexed, we will be responsible. I'm saying for the rest of the individuals that live on that road, are we responsible for fire and police protection? That's what I need clarification.
Understood. We'll get you that answer.
Thank you. No, 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 let staff do it.
Thank you. Commissioner Casella?
It's been past experiences, Bradley, is that when we annex a small pocket of land like this, which is county, there's always confusion when someone dials 911. If somebody dials 911, being in the city, we would respond to this. But if the house next to it called 911, that would be a county call or a sheriff's call, depending what agency they need it. That creates some confusion. It has in the past, and it will continue to do that. I don't know how you... How do you get around that when someone dials 911 from that location?
Yep, and I understand that. That's one of the reasons why the county and the city encourages the annexation of these pockets to eliminate that confusion. Most of the time, the services are being provided by the municipality, but you're still in a county pocket. So not only are you providing the service, but then you're not getting the tax benefit of the properties being in the city. So I certainly understand it. I just wanted to point out that fire looked at it from this project standpoint, and we'll get an answer as far as the rest of the road goes. I'm along with Mr. Graff on wanting to see the documentation of the ownership of the road. Our understanding and the title work that we've had in preparing our survey and plan didn't show us owning to the middle of the road. So, which is typically what happens when those documents affect a property. It might be true for the rest of the road, but we didn't find it for our property. There seems to be a misconception of a wall. We're not proposing a wall along Chucker Road. We have landscape there. So yes, Waterside has a wall on the north side, but we're not proposing a wall. So that conflict is a misconception. The drainage itself is... I'll go back to that. There's two means of us improving on the drainage... Three means of improving on the drainage situation. One is we have a grass detention area that's in the kind of northeast portion of the property. We also have this exfiltration trench that's below our parking lot. Those are the conceptual design, which will continue through the process. Gets reviewed by the city of Boynton Beach, gets reviewed by Lakewood Drainage District, and should also get reviewed by South Florida Water Management District. One of their top criteria of all those three agencies is that you don't cause any further flooding issues to anybody else that's adjacent to your property. That's the purpose of the drainage. As each storm that we get comes along, those drainage requirements get more and more restrictive. So it has gone through a conceptual review by your staff. And as we continue forward, and we do have a condition of approval to address the drainage issue on Chucker Road, which we're agreeing to. So as we continue with the permitting of this site, that issue is going to be addressed, at least at the frontage there of our property. I thank you, Commissioner Katz, for your comments about recognizing the existing conditions with the roadway. It is what it is today, and I think it is a small road, acknowledged. The traffic situation was reviewed to Commissioner McCray's comment and question. There was a traffic study prepared. It's been reviewed by county staff and approved by county staff for the development. So all of those checkboxes have been checked and gone through the process. I agree. The residents here, for our community, will likely share the same issue with trucks. There's a great question about why are the trucks going down this road? And it's still probably a mystery for all of us. But I think, I don't know why we wouldn't want to jump on board to improve on the signage that's already there to help alleviate that. So the bus stop location, I did look at the plan, and it's actually being moved closer to the southern end. It's still out on federal highway, but moved away from Chucker Road, closer to the southern end of the property. I think I touched on everything there, and I guess I take that back. There was a question about why the annexation. As plans are put together for cities, one of the things that's looked at by your planning staff is planning and beyond, because it does tie in with utilities and service to these properties. At one point in time, all of us were Palm Beach County, and as the cities grow, they take up these properties and take responsibility for those services. This is a unique pocket that there's other areas around that is still in the county. The annexation part of it is actually part of your comprehensive plan, and it's already been designated to when there's the opportunity to annex this property, that you do annex this property. So we're really just fulfilling the... One of the objectives and policies of your comprehensive plan to put this into place. So if there's any other questions, be happy to try to address them.
My question's regarding the planning and development board conditions. Is the applicant okay with those conditions?
We're in agreement with both. One is the working with Chucker Road and the drainage, and the other is providing additional plant material to attract butterflies.
So you already agreed to help with any flooding issues?
Yes.
Okay. I have no more questions. Vice Mayor?
I just want to thank Bradley for the plug on annexation into our city.
Sure.
All right. Seeing no more further comments? Excuse me, I'm sorry, but the public comments is over. You all have an opportunity at second reading. Excuse me, but you're not at the podium. You don't get to speak. All right, we're moving forward. Jim, we'll take the first ordinance. I know you've read them. So ordinance number 18-024 may have a motion to approve.
Second?
All right, may have a roll call, please.
Mayor Grant?
Here. Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Romulus?
Hi.
Commissioner Casella?
Yes.
Vote is five to zero.
Pose ordinance number 18-025 may have a motion to approve. May have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Romulus?
Yes.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
And Mayor Grant?
Yes.
The vote is five to zero.
Opposed ordinance number 18-026 may have a motion to approve.
Second.
May have a roll call, please.
Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Romulus?
Yes.
Commissioner Casello? Mayor Grant?
Yes.
And Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Vote is five to zero.
And does the board want to wait till the second reading to approve the, the new site plan?
Sure.
Okay. So we'll have a motion to table, please?
So move. Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The site plan is table to next reading. Jim, ordinance number 18-027?
That one is, uh, the request to leave it on the table, or to place it on the table until October 16th.
All right. And then ordinance number 18-023 may have a motion to remove from the table?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
18023, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida authorizing abandonment of a portion of northeast First Avenue, more particularly described herein, subject to staff comments, authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer which shall be recorded with this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
And? Any discussion from the board? Sing none, may have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
And Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Vote is five to zero.
All right, moving on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask our arts administrator, Debbie, to come on up. We had a request from Vice Mayor last meeting to place, to give you all an update on our town square, the local artist participation in our town square project. We're still in the, the beginnings or the earlier stages of, of this portion of the project, but Debbie's going to give you an update.
Hi, Debbie Colstebay, Public Art Manager, and as requested, yes, I'm here to review the emerging local artist public art program. This was to identify, the program's recognizing that Palm Beach County has few qualified public artists, and has identified the need to educate, facilitate more local artists to be trained to become public artists. This program aligns itself with the city's initiative to build local wealth. In identifying emerging local or mid-career artists that are desired to team, to learn somehow to become qualified public artists, the program will educate and train artists through the art and public places programs and best practices, processes, and procedures. So basically what we've done, the objective is, again, to implement an opportunity for emerging local or mid-career artists to team up with accomplished public artists, to create and integrate public art into the city's town square projects. In addition to that, several public art projects will be available for the shortlisted emerging local artists to create projects through a call to artists and through the process that we have in place. So how we did this is we had artists submit their information onto the city's website, onto a form. It was published May 30th with a deadline of July 27th, so it was out there quite some time. And the call was for emerging local artists to participate. We published it through the county, Palm Beach County's list, where they have a extensive email list, as well as in social media, and other organizations passed it along as well. So we got quite a bit of popularity in getting artists to participate. So in the application, we had a total of 16 emerging local artists who submitted their application, and what we'll be doing now, like I said, it's early in the stage, but what we'll be doing now is the applications will be reviewed and approved by the Arts Commission, and then the artists will be paired with public artists that are selected through our calls to artists for, one, the police station, and two, the interactive plaza projects. And then once the public artist's chosen for these projects, the emerging local artist, their submissions will be reviewed by the artists who are selected, who are the public artists who are selected for each one of those projects, and they will be teamed up together to then work together on the project. So this will give them expert ability to learn from these approved official art, public artists who have done this many, many times before, and they'll be able to learn the process, they'll be able to learn how to do budgeting, how to do proposals, how to do installation, how to do fabrication, and work with the team, meaning the town square teams, to integrate the art into the different projects. The additional opportunity is going to create original artworks that'll be available for placement on site-specific locations for the following projects. One is the new fire station, and the second one will be what I call canvases on the various parking garages, so there'll be mural opportunities for that. So again, these will be, of the 16 emerging artists who submitted their proposals, we will be able to select, and they'll be able to go through the process of submitting their ideas for the Arts Commission to approve them, to be able to be selected for those opportunities as well. So basically, out of the 16 artists who have already submitted their submission, there's probably up to about five opportunities for artists to become engaged and become engaged in the process, to be able to learn how to be full public artist. Do you have any questions?
Hello? When a artist is selected, is it on the, the Arts Commission, is it by majority vote, like the five board members, or seven board, I forget how many board members you have? Do they decide who the artist is going to be by majority vote?
Uh, yes, excuse me, yes, that's how it works.
So if it comes down to, you know...
There is criteria that will be evaluated, so if there's a match and the artist who proposes, puts their proposal together, is considered, are they a good match? Are they going to meet the criteria for the project? And then the Arts Commission will be able to select which ones are appropriate to move forward with that project.
Okay, so it's the whole commission that votes, the Arts Commission that votes on selectors?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Are there no additional boards or committees that will vote on this artwork in addition to the Arts Commission?
For the emerging artist program, it's mostly the Arts Commission that will be involved in that. Mm-hmm. Yes, I'm sorry, it will be the Arts Commission.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Mm-hmm, sorry.
So the, the 16 artists who you found, what counts as locally? What constitutes locally?
Palm Beach County, and there are some Boynton Beach artists. So we have a good mixture. We have about five Boynton artists, and the rest are Palm Beach County artists. But I think our merger, our local building wealth program, I think, is focused directly on Boynton, so there'll be more weight on those artists as they come through in front. So if there's, so if there's a decision between one is Palm Beach County and Boynton, the Boynton will have more weight.
What's the process of how we select the two artists that will get to receive some type of stipend for the project that they create?
For the emerging artist program?
Is that, am I confusing different programs? Is that something else?
Um, yeah, there are two different processes that we use for, like, for instance, for the police station and the interactive plaza projects, those are calls to artists. Everybody's allowed to, and welcome, to submit their past projects, and then we go by looking at their letter of intent, as well as examples that best match the type of project that we're moving forward on. And that's how, it's, it's a whole, like, grid of criteria that is judged upon, and then they are select, they're shortlisted, and then the two shortlisted artists are then prepared, they're, they given stipends to prepare a proposal for the committee and the Arts Commission to approve one artist to work with.
Okay, so, so I am not confusing, it is a continuation of that same process? It's just that they get further along in the process, those two artists that will get the stipend?
The emerging local artist program follows similar and same processes as when we do a, a call to artists, yes. They will go through the same, they will learn the process and the proceeds that we go through, yes.
Yes, Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. Debbie, uh, you know, probably, well, for clarification, for, you know, the group that's sitting up here, you probably need to tell us what's the duty of this art commission? I'm, I'm just saying, because sometimes it seems like we're getting off track of the duty. I'm, I'm just saying, you know, you work at our discretion, but, you know, sometime I think that we overstep our bounds. What's, what's really the duties of the art commission for the city?
Well, it's to run the art and public places program based on the guidelines and recommendations and our ordinance. There's a, again, a whole list of the ordinance guidelines and recommendations that we follow, and my job is to guide them through that process.
Perhaps, you know, between you and Lori, you all can send us a copy of those ordinance and guidelines. I'm just saying so that we can refresh ourselves, I'm just saying, because sometime we overstep our bounds in our decision-making process, that's all I'm saying, thank you.
We can certainly provide that information for you, thank you.
And when are the meetings again?
The meetings are the second Thursday of every month. Since we have a lot of work to do, the board has committed to three-hour meetings, so we can get a lot of this work done for the next couple of months. So our meetings are six to nine, so next meeting would be, what is it, October 11th? Thank you. Six to nine. And our meetings are at the fire station number two.
Yes, Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. One final is, you know, the information that you send to us, make sure that, you know, the art commission, the ordinance, as well as the members, they get the same information, so we all will be on the same page. I don't know if you all share that with them, you know, but some, some of us are missing the vote, that's all I'm saying.
All right, I will definitely share the email to everybody, thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Last question, I sent an email earlier to you guys, you and Lori, about the Minnesota established LLC. Can you guys just please clarify on that, and what does that mean?
Sure, when we start, oh, you want to answer, Lori? Go ahead.
Well, yeah, the gentleman, and I had emailed you back, the gentleman, Steve Collins, the LLC, they are the bond issuer, they are the, the funding partner for our town square project, and are kind of technically the owner, you know, but it's part of us doing the P3, the, all the construction of the buildings is going to be contracts that are between now the contractors and CFP, not the city. And help me if I screw this up. So it's because of the, the nature of the transaction of the P3. So originally, when we approached the, as the CFP being the owner, they're the ones that were going to go into contract with the artist, and that's what you saw. Steve Collins is the representative with CFP Community Funding Partners, who are the bond issuers. They were going to go into contract with the artist directly. And as we kind of talked through the practicality of the program, they're, yeah, they're located in Minnesota. So we asked them, we, you know, let, and it was not Debbie's choice, actually, it was ours, as administering the town square project, it added a lot more work to Debbie to say, let, would the funding partners agree to, the money allocated for our, give it to the city, and let us manage the contracts, how they're paid, when they're paid, because they're, it's, needs to be handled literally locally on the site. So that agreement that went out for, I think that you sent me in the copy, I think that we're not going to be using that agreement. We're going to end up just doing a direct contract between the city and the artist now. But originally, it should have been through CFP, because they're the owners.
Right, and so that's what I asked the email, to have when that amendment is done, or when that change is done, to copy this commission and let us know that, that responsibility is now in the hands of us as a city, especially if this is art, arts program, and not some out-of-state LLC.
Yeah, I'll be happy, because I have, we typically, I'll sign off on the agreements, but I'll send you copies of them when we, when we do the, when we engage the artist, absolutely. Okay, I didn't realize that's what you're, you're asking. Gotcha.
And just so you know, it might take a couple of months to get those artist agreements together, so your patience is thanked. Anything else?
I don't think so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'd love to come back and provide you some updates in the future, too, on kind of how all the elements of the art program, program are moving, because that's just one piece of it. We'd love to, because it's pretty, it's a neat process.
I'd love to see art, so, and we, we could actually start seeing art, that's...
Oh, that's going to, you got a year and a half.
Okay.
I'm fine with the updates, I want the updates, thank you.
All right, now Vice Mayor, you request the commission to discuss the attached email from Susan Oyer.
Right, um, this is also along the lines of just art and trying to get civic involvement with this. This was a, an idea given by Susan Oyer, I'm not sure if she's still here, since she wasn't feeling well, she is still here, so feel free to come up and elaborate further on this, Susan, since this is your idea, and I don't want to steal your shine. But I, I, I think this is something that if staff could work to, to kind of ferret out the idea, and then also just create something that would allow, maybe this was, would be something that, Eleanor, sorry to put more work on you, Eleanor.
Right.
Eleanor, or someone else can work with, with Susan to kind of create something like this, to get involvement and participation from us as the commission and members of the public. I, I, I think this is something that just allows for us to engage more and kind of really have people feel like they're taking an active role in this process of restructuring and revitalizing downtown. That's really why I brought this up.
And if I may, before Susan speaks, um, yes, we absolutely, we are, we have discussed it amongst staff, and as well as, I, if you remember, we, we hold partnering meetings with the entire development team about every four to six months, and this came up as part of our discussion of a branding committee. We're actually, as, as far as branding, the entirety of downtown, but a big part of town square. And, you know, we think we can do something like this in, in working with wayfinding signs, you can do contests with your community, to do, if, if it's the sailfish or what, it could be horses, I've seen it done in Lexington, Kentucky, where they had horses throughout the community, where businesses sponsor them, they create art out of them, they sell them, they donate money to charity, like Susan suggested, we could absolutely do something like that. It would be when town square is done, so we're, we're looking at a year and a half away or so, but I think we could absolutely do it.
Two and a half.
Be fun. We'd have a lot of fun with it.
Add something, Susan?
I will put my hand in before she go.
Oh, Commissioner McCray, thank you.
Thank you. My take is that, you know, Mrs. Oyer, when you give your comments, make sure that you let us know that you serve on the arts, you know, commission, I, I'm just saying, you know, because a lot of this is tied in, and I, I don't want us to start taking things away from the art commission and things that they're supposed to be doing, and start putting it out like to individual citizens, that's my take, I don't want us to get too overwhelmed with this. That's my comment.
Do I go now, or should, I think Commissioner Katz had his hand up?
You can speak.
Okay. Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way, um, I actually sent this in before you reappointed me onto the arts board. I have seen these exhibitions all across the world, they were very famous with the cows years ago, where they brought in a bunch of cows into Chicago, a bunch of artists painted them, it got tons of publicity. I've seen them repeatedly over the years on assorted trips to Europe. Right now, what triggered it in my mind was tusks.org, the charity out of Africa that helps protect the elephants and rhinos. They are doing a massive one across the city of London right now, and they got all these famous artists and rock stars to paint rhinos, and I had seen it, because Ronnie Wood from the Rolling Stones had done one, and it's getting tons and tons of publicity, and, you know, residents, tourists, everybody wants to take a picture, everybody wants to run around and find them all, you know, there's scavenger hunts within the cities, they're repeatedly getting press, it's not a one-time, oh, here's the exhibition, you know, let's get lots of press. It's a continuous cycle of good press for the city of London, and it, you know, I, it seems like once a month, they're doing some kind of event, and my thought was, why not bring something like this to our city? We're, we're coming out with a whole new town square, you know, why not use our wonderful sailfish, which I know some people love, some people hate, but I, I just thought you guys could take this idea and run with it, and, and, and I did, like I said, sent this out before I rejoined the arts board, but it, it just seems like this is a great way to get publicity, we could use it as a fundraiser if we're allowed to. I had suggested in my letter, and I, I don't know if you want to put it up there for everybody to see, that there's two local, there's two charities that we might want to consider supporting, the Billfish Foundation, since our city logo is a billfish. The other option I suggested is Four Oceans, which is the ocean cleanup company out of Boca, which is about to have a huge international presence very shortly. I thought those, either of those, or maybe both of those, one from the initial fundraiser, one from a later fundraiser, might be a great way. It would, I think it'd be a great way for our board members, our commissioners, you know, people to get involved. It could be sponsored by individuals, could do their own, businesses could do their own... It could be sponsored by individuals, could do their own, businesses could do their own, whatever we, whatever you guys want to do, I just thought this was, would be a great way to brand our city, and we could use that cool paint Commissioner Katz has suggested before, that only shows up when it rains, so when it would rain, we'd, you know, you could do part of it in regular paint and part in the enhanced paint, you know, there's all kinds of options, we could do different sizes, we could do the billfish by itself, the billfish in a circle, you know, whatever you want to do, I thought it was a nice way to maybe get some of the local businesses involved, in actually creating this, maybe South Tech or one of our metal fabrication companies, I don't know if the city has an option, it just seems like there's so many possibilities, and this would be a great way for everyone to get involved and take ownership, and, you know, at the end, we could, you know, have the residents vote to keep one of them, keep five of them, you know, maybe we could sell them all, whatever you guys want to do. It's just my initial ideas that I said, please run with it, because it seems like this would be a great way to achieve a lot of fabulous positive publicity, and if we're allowed to make donations, make, do good in the world with two organizations, or whatever ones you guys choose, that are related to this. I'm not trying to put more work on Debbie, and certainly not Eleanor, who, you know, she's the superwoman in the room, but I just thought this would be a great way to really start our town square with a bang, and it would be international, which is the best part. Awesome, thank you, Susan, thank you for taking the time to share that with us, and again, I think from, what, the timeline that you're mentioning, Lori, maybe this is something that, as we get nearer to downtown or Town Square, wrapping up, the arts commission with, under kind of your suggestion and research, can start creating the layout of this program, and kind of, you know, send that forward to staff and to the commission, and then we can kind of really roll out this program with the assistance of Eleanor and Debbie and the people to kind of really make it a success, and I would love the opportunity to really brand and really get our Town Square just, you know, out on a roll with something like this, that would bring international awareness to our city. So I think it's great.
Oh, well, thank you, I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Katz, followed by Casella.
Yeah, I want to echo the sentiments, that I fully support something like this, I think that I've made clear my opinion in the past, that I think that, especially for the downtown, where there's, the hope is to have a lot of foot traffic and a lot of pedestrian activity, that, you know, there needs to be art for the people, not art thrust upon the people, and I think it's important that something like this, which might seem cheap to some, or might seem like it's been used and done before, you know, all I can say to that is, is a regular person who appreciates art, but isn't some art aficionado, you know, that the biggest art event to someone like me, that happens in Palm Beach County, in terms of people's attention, tends to be the Lake Worth Street Painting Festival, so something that's cheap and simple, that allows regular people to engage in a public space in artistic expression, you know, I think that you can't discount that, because it truly activates people, versus just bringing in expensive art, or art by famous people that have no connection to Boynton Beach, I think that a healthy mix, and this starts to steer us in a direction of acknowledging that, you know, public art is not just art in public, it's art for the public, and this is a working-class city, and it's a, you know, a marine-themed city, if you will, people always try to push that, and it'd be nice to rekindle that by way of some art to the fashion that's being described, so I like, I like the direction that this potentially drives us in, and I think that, that we need more of these types of things that enhance, you know, the public participation in the arts program, not just, here's some money to spend on art and put it in the public. I like this, and I think that this is a good, a good thing that needs to be injected into the arts program, to engage regular people, you know, who appreciate art, but aren't, you know, reading art magazines or going to museums every weekend.
Commissioner Casella, then Vice Mayor.
And I will confess, I know nothing about art. Would you say, like in London, they paint these rhinos and elephants?
Yes, I'll be glad to send you some of the pictures, so you can see them.
Here's, here's my suggestion, and it's just got a lot of publicity, and we could continue on that, we could use those kangaroos in Jupiter.
Well, I think maybe Jupiter should do kangaroos.
We could do kangaroos. That's, take it or leave it.
Vice Mayor.
No, I just wanted to condense Commissioner Katz's comments, and say, art by the public and for the public.
Um, no, I remember when my university did something like that, we had turtles throughout the campus, and, you know, they had one painted like a cow in front of the dairy. The situation is that these things are not cheap, they're not 500 or 1,000, they're very expensive, and the fact that they have to be hurricane-proof, I think is something that we also have to look at, and so maybe it's something that we look at, something that is much smaller, that's the size of the other fish here. One of the things I was talking with Lori, that she's reached out, is the mural painting over at our solar canopies, that they've been recently covered in concrete to protect the metal columns, and so I'd like to reach out and have a public, be that as part of the public art as well, with the approval of FPL. I think that, I remember at one time, we had painted trashcans, mural trashcans.
Dumpsters.
Yeah, mural dumpsters. And so I definitely agree with what Commissioner Katz and Vice Mayor are saying, we need to have art for the public, and I just want to make sure that this is fiscally responsible with what we're doing, because a 10-foot steel or aluminum structure is not a cheap thing that has to be anchored down into the ground.
We're going to have some beautiful space at Town Square with the public open space, where we've talked about playing our, planning our art festivals, where you get all your real local artists, the moms and dads and grandpas that paint for a hobby, to come out and do some really fun events, from an event standpoint, it's going to be a lot of fun.
And so Lori, are we going to have like a brand task force, or?
We're working toward, yes.
Okay.
Yes, we will.
And then, speaking of the brand, are they also going to be working on our centennial?
We have to, yes, we've already been talking about it.
So if we can combine those two things, that'd probably be something what I'd like to see.
Yep.
Any other comment? Yes, Commissioner McCray.
My take is, everybody's saying this is a great idea, perhaps it is, I don't want us to do an overkill, I don't want everywhere I look, I see a piece of art I'm bumping into, I don't want it to be an overkill, that's my comment. We can do too much sometime, thank you.
Any other comments? Saying none, thank you very much, Susan.
I request permission to put my sailfish on Commissioner McCray's property, if this plan comes to fruition.
I want him to put it up, then a hurricane comes, so I can get away and go move back to Georgia, thank you.
All right, moving on to item 11B, discussion on board member advocacy ordinance. Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. The agenda cover sheet explains a little bit of the history of the drafting of this proposed ordinance, and I want to emphasize, it is just that, it's the outline of a proposed ordinance. I met with Mark Bannon, who is the executive, or the administrator of the Palm Beach County Commission on Ethics, and Kristi Kelly, who's the general counsel, to review the previous draft that the commission reviewed and tabled. This new version goes significantly further in distinguishing between the advocacy by a board member and lobbying by a board member. Lobbying is defined as, in the same manner as it's defined in the Palm Beach County Code of Ethics. The city in 2010 adopted, came under the jurisdiction, the Palm Beach County Code of Ethics, and it is that code that specifically controls lobbying, so those definitions do apply. This ordinance has proposed does nothing to expand the definition of lobbying as it relates to that, so the Palm Beach County Code of Ethics would apply, and the Palm Beach County Ethics Commission rules and regulations would apply. If somebody had an issue regarding a board member engaged in lobbying, the complaint would be filed with and reviewed by that entity. What this draft does is describes advocacy, which is not lobbying, because lobbying involves the payment of money or compensation for the effort, advocacy does none of that. It's just the use of the position of a board member to advance or block some proposed item that's coming before the commissioner, coming before the board. And the actions that a board member could do would be unrelated to items that would foreseeably come before that board. If it's not going to come before the board, they could do really essentially what they would want to do as a citizen or business owner within the city. What the draft does provide is that lobbying by a board member is prohibited, in other words, a board member cannot engage in the business of lobbying. What a board member would have to do, as one of your board members has suggested earlier in a public meeting, is faced with the choice between being a lobbyist, being a board member, they would choose being a lobbyist. Another board member might choose just the opposite, to choose not to engage in any lobbying activity. The penalty for violation of the provisions of what has been drafted is the commission's authority to remove that individual from the board, following notice to the board member, of course, opportunity to hear their point of view, and then a vote to remove them. I'm not certain whether this advances the intent of the commission as discussed, I would ask you to focus first on the whereas provisions of the draft, and see if this is within the ballpark of what your intent is, the whereas provisions constitute your findings as the, as the city commission, before implementing the provisions of the code change itself. If you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer it.
Commissioner Casella, followed by Commissioner McCray.
So the lobbying lobbyists, that's already in the Palm Beach County Code of Ethics, that's, we're not changing anything there, that's, it is what it is.
There's nothing for the commission to do to change that, unless you want to reverse what the commission put in place in 2010, and in my opinion, has worked very well, it turns all that responsibility over to the county agency to do that.
Good, and it gives a defined definition of advocacy, on what, what a board member can do. A board member can still advocate in front of us, if it hasn't become, if it's not an issue in front of his board, correct?
That's right.
Okay, so, it's pretty simple, and I thank you for going up there and taking that time, and making this very straightforward, pretty simple.
Their offices are in the old courthouse building that's been restored, and they need some new air conditioning, it was a very hot day there.
Commissioner McCray.
Thank you, I want to say, since we follow in the purview of the county, I'm just saying, you know, I see no reason like we should even be moving forward, but I do want to ask Lori, the money that we were setting aside, have we ever paid that, or are we still holding on to the money, or for the ethics thing, what happened?
That was for the inspector general, and we do fund it each year, but no, it's, we have not, that lawsuit got appealed, and then the, I think the IG lost on that, didn't they? So there is no mechanism at this point for us to pay the IG.
How much we have stored now for the IG?
No, nothing stored, I mean, I think we budgeted...
Put away.
I think we budgeted, and I need to double check, but I think we budgeted 50...
About $90,000.
No, we used to do $90,000, I think we reduced it. Mara, or, do you know that offhand, I know Mara's out there somewhere, do you know, no, let me get that for you tomorrow, Commissioner, I think we reduced it to maybe 50.
Okay, thank you, okay, I'm good.
Just anticipation of that changing, but it hasn't.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? So my question is, is that this would be a new ordinance, and that we would want to have to recommend to be put on the next agenda? Jim?
Yes, right now, it's just a suggestion, and if you're interested in it, then the commission should direct it to be placed on for first reading.
Okay, but this draft is not available for first reading?
It is not.
Okay, so I'll take a motion from the board, if they'd like to see this as, for first reading.
I would like to make that motion, Mayor, to put this on for the next agenda for the first reading.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, any further discussion from the board? Saying none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Is it a four to one vote?
Yep.
Three to two vote. So, we'll see it at October 16th agenda. Moving on to, the commission to discuss, the commission meeting that would normally be scheduled for Tuesday, January 1st, 2019, and decide to either reschedule or cancel the meeting, my vote would be to cancel.
Cancel.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Commission, approve the request of Commissioner Joe Casella distribute 1,000 of his community support fund to Youth and Enrichment Association for Academics and Athletics Wildcats Football.
A move.
Do I have a second? All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Approve the request of Commissioner Joe Casella distribute 1,000 of his community support funds to Florida Youth Rugby Union, a nonprofit organization. May I have a motion to approve?
A move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion?
Yes.
I'd just like for it to be stated for the record, that it's whoever's going to be sitting at the remainder for Commissioner Casella's seat, that they will have no funds in 2019 to distribute, am I correct? Thank you.
All right. Saying no, furthermore, further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Item F, approve of proposed settlement of litigation matter of Denise Dennis Lendez versus City of Boynton Beach and all of their pending claims by this employee. May I have a motion to approve?
A move.
Is there a second?
Question?
Yes.
So just, just, this has been a while, but let me just, work with me here, this is one of our police officers, correct? Police officer was at a training facility, police training facility, on Minor Road, the range.
Old fire station...
That's where the...
Three, two, it's the old station two on Congress Avenue, near Wilbright, not the, not the Minor Road facility.
Not the Minor Road, okay.
It's an old firehouse.
He was in a training session, and from what I, from what was described to me, there was some kind of horse play, where this officer and a bunch of other, a couple of other officers ran outside for whatever reason, this particular officer slipped, hurt his knee, correct?
That's the story.
That's the story, okay, we then take care of him medically through workers' comp, got him well, and back to work, correct? Okay, so, why are we being sued, why are we giving $67,000 to this individual now?
Well, because, let me just jump in, because you referenced workers' comp, you would expect, I think most people's experience is that when an employee is injured on the job or associated activity with the job, that workers' comp covers that exclusively, but that's not true. There are exceptions to that coverage that allow an individual to sue their own employer if they could establish certain facts associated with the conditions that gave rise to the injury. This case falls under that exception to the workers' comp, so the claim therefore exceeds the amount that would be available under workers' comp for other types of loss by the employee.
But what were the conditions that prompted this?
A slip and fall case associated with the sidewalk area that had a material on it, that the plaintiff claimed should have been known, and should have been treated.
Okay, so my question is, we made him whole again, good enough to come back to work, correct?
That's true.
Okay, so why, with all that being said, why, why is, why are we getting sued? And the original ask was for, correct me if I'm wrong, was somewhere up near the $200,000 mark, correct?
That's correct.
So this is a settlement, and we do settlements because it's, it's business, correct?
Settlements, one way, evaluate the risk and think that there's a equal or better chance of the employee or the plaintiff in any particular case recovering more than we would want to spend.
Okay, so is this because there's some kind of loophole in the, in a workers' comp that can be addressed, or is workers' comp not adequate? Because if, if this particular individual can come after us or sue us, then other individuals who, who work for the city and get hurt and injured and get back on a job, could, this could be an ongoing thing, correct?
It could be an ongoing thing, thing under the limited circumstances, when an employee can sue an employer outside of this, outside of the workers' comp claim, which is what this case, this is an exception to a general, where you don't see very many of these.
Okay, okay, so I guess my question is, just to educate me, what's that exception? What makes it exceptional that this lawsuit could happen?
A condition... A condition that an employer knew of, that the employer could have fixed and didn't fix.
Is that a negligence claim?
Like a type of negligence.
It's very much like a negligence.
Negligence on part of the city. Now, this individual, if we sign off on this vote for this, he has agreed to leave the city employment?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Is it, is this employee working now? Is he back to work now?
He's out on FMLA right now.
Yeah.
He's still an employee, but he's out on FMLA, family medical leave for some other medical condition.
So he's got another medical condition on top of whatever happened here.
How much have we spent on legal fees?
I don't have that number, but I could get that number, perhaps even while we're discussing this.
Can you give us an estimate?
I can't. I don't want to guess.
All right. And how many years have we been litigating this case?
Oh, five years.
So I'm going to guess at least $10,000 per year.
Yeah.
And if we go to trial, that's another $30,000?
To go to trial, yes.
So, you know, this is over and done with. And this means that he cannot claim workers' comp later on. And there'll be a finality in this case. That's, that's kind of where we're at.
Mayor, and I totally get it. And, you know, my, my six years of been up here, it's these kind of cases, we've given out hundreds of thousands of dollars to cases where we settle because it's, it's business. It's a business decision. And I can tell you, if businesses outside this, this chamber did business, like we do some of these business deals here, that have out-of-business signs on their windows. You know, I think we've took, litigated one case, one case, since I've been here, and we actually won that case. It was a good feeling. I'm, I'm going to be gone in a month or so. And I would recommend, and I think I mentioned this to you, Jim, you're a great lawyer, you guys do some great work, but I wouldn't let things linger as long. I think when we have a potential lawsuit coming on, or a court case coming on, we've got to meet it head-on earlier in the, in the proceedings, not two, three years down the road where we're already 40, 50, $60,000 in litigation fees, before it even gets to the point of going to, you know, going to trial. So that's the only thing I would ask in the future, that, you know, this future commission, we address these issues much early in the process and potentially, you know, take more of these to litigation, maybe even win a few. That's all I would ask.
Commissioner Katz?
Yeah, I'm kind of, you know, in this case, and I'm pretty, pretty good at normally weighing the cost benefit and letting go of the fact that I don't necessarily want to settle a case, but financially it makes sense to. You know, in this one, I just, I can't see a reason to settle because unlike other situations where I can put myself in the shoes of a juror and, and see about responsibility if it falls, you know, to the city to some degree, or the victim, or the alleged victim, you know, who's filed the lawsuit, you know, in this one, based on the circumstances of, of the case, I just, you know, I don't see the city bearing any responsibility, given the, the horseplay and question that led to the event that caused the injury. So I'm, I'm with, I believe, Commissioner Casello on this one, that, you know, that there's no reason to believe that we would lose this case. And I think that this is a good one to move forward. And settling it just kind of, you know, it pays individuals or an individual that directly led to their own injury while on the job and, you know, engaged in, in some sort of negligence on their behalf. So I'm, I'm not in favor of the settlement.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. Lori, you said that he's out now? He's not, you know, presently working?
Yes, sir. He's out on family medical leave, I believe. And I can't, and by law, I can't, I don't even know why it's, I'm not privy to that. It's, it's private medical information. So I can't discuss it publicly.
But you can tell me that we are still paying this guy, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
He's, he's taking his sick and vacation time under the family medical leave.
Okay, so another question.
He's still an employee.
Okay, that another question that you can ask, you know, and that is, what is his, you know, how much he makes a month? This is what I'm going to ask. You can answer that.
I would be, I would be guessing at this point. But I mean, he's, he's been here, he's probably making $70,000 or $80,000. But I could confirm that with payroll tomorrow.
Now, we're getting with your family medical leave. How long has he been out? Because I know you can say that.
I don't know, know that off the top of my head.
Okay, that's why I'm.
I can, you know, we can.
That's why, you know, I understand what everybody else is saying, but that's why I'm in favor of go ahead selling this and get rid of this employee, because I'm going to go ahead and say that I think that he's a liability to this city.
Vice Mayor?
Okay. Yeah. This is not something he can come back later on and file a disability pension claim against us, can he?
I don't think so. I think this, the way this settlement is structured is that he waives all additional claims.
I'll take that as a no.
As a no.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve?
A move.
Is there a second?
It was already seconded, yes.
Okay. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Aye.
Settlement is denied. Moving forward with legal. Proposed Resolution Number 18-147, authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement between the town of Hypoluxo and the city of Boynton Beach to provide water, sewer, and reuse services to the town. May I have a motion to approve?
A move.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Jim, are we ready for this ordinance?
We are most certainly ready for this ordinance.
Motion to remove.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Remove from the table, Jim. Ordinance Number 18-017.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Part III Land Development Regulations, Chapter III Zoning, Article V Supplemental Regulation, Section 13, Wireless Communication Facilities of the city of Boynton Beach. Code of Ordinance is to provide for revisions relating to the exclusion of regulations related to the placement of wireless communication facilities in the, in the public rights of way, providing for city commission authority, codification, severability, conflict, and an effective date.
May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Question?
Yes.
Have we gotten everything clarified with all the other outside entities who had concerns with this ordinance?
Yes, we have.
Thank you very much for stating that. That's all I needed to hear.
Any other discussion from the board? Seeing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Ramos. Vote is five to zero.
Moving on to future agenda items. I'd like to discuss our, you know, development code regarding the signage and awnings and the appeal process. I feel that we need to have a lower fee for an appeal, because when I was talking to the middle schoolers about civil discourse, I had to explain the difference between objective and subjective, where I used a traffic light that everybody knows how to stop at a red light, however, and you use objective. Whereas a yellow light, you have to use subjective reasoning, where you don't know how far you're away from the intersection. Is it, did the light just turn yellow? How fast are you driving? And so because we have such subjective ordinances and code, I think we need to have that appeals process so that the community can weigh in for this. Is, is that okay with the board?
I was going wrong with that?
All right. Now I got two nots. So I'll move forward and put that on the future agenda item. All right.
Wait, 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 wait.
You got it.
Just we'll put it on the future agenda item. How fast we want to clear this up? I'm just saying, there's no need to keep putting things on there. And we keep letting them linger, linger. How fast can staff bring something back to us?
We need some time. I would say, give us till the second meeting in November. Because development's swamped. This isn't, you know, when you ran, review code and you start digging into it, it's, it's a lot more time than a quick discussion.
I'm very, very much aware of how deep, you know, development is to get back in the turnaround. Is there anything that this board can recommend to help development with the turnaround times?
We're saying that this is something that we need to kind of like.
We need to address the building community in the city of Boynton Beach so that we don't get.
Let me talk to, let me talk to Mike and see what it's going to take. But, you know, there, I mean, they've got projects and priorities and strategic plan stuff. They're going through LDRs and code, and this, something's going to get set aside for us to make this a new priority. So it's, it's just, let me, let me confer with him and find out what that'll take.
So, yeah.
Give you some update next meeting?
Uh, yeah.
Where we are with the whole, what, it may be something simpler than I, normally it isn't, but let me bring something back to you next meeting.
So, yeah, I'd like to see an update of the building department. That'd be wonderful.
Right, right. But hopefully it is, Lori. I'm just saying, this is something that's been plaguing, you know, the building. We talk about, you know, we want people to occupy that keeps popping up and coming up. I'm just saying, this is something that we don't let linger too long. We need to move on and get it over with. Sooner the better.
We can do.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All right, appreciate it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Here's the end.